We're good.
I'm going to call the the work session on Thursday, February 24th to order at 9:05 a.m. I see that we have everyone here with Bob participating remotely, so if I can get a motion to allow him to participate remotely.
So moved.
Calls in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions, subtractions, changes besides the ones that I have?
I do not.
Jamie? Wait. Do you know Joe's password?
No, he doesn't, but I'll figure it out.
Okay. Bob, do you have any changes?
Do we need to start a system where you register your password with me?
Okay. We'll do our very best. Alright, so do you want to change this? Alright, I need to remove item of discussion number 10. Discussion of sidewalk construction and repair policy. We're just gonna remove that. So we'll slide up the minutes to number 10. And then I need to add a closed session pursuant to NCGS 143.318.1184 for economic development. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Calls in favor?
Aye.
Alright, next up is presentations. It doesn't look like we have any, so after that we have C, items of discussion. Number one, discussion of facility maintenance supervisor authority to use discretion for facility rentals discounts. Derek.
Derek.
Yeah, I'll just kind of start off by saying, um, we've had some discussion in-house about facility rentals. And in the past, I think Derek, the park supervisor, facility maintenance supervisor, whatever the title was back then, had some level of discretion to offer discounts or free rentals for nonprofits and that sort of thing. We've had some discussion come up in-house over the last couple of days and there's a little bit of unclarity from our standpoint. We want to just get clarity from you all as to what his discretion is, if any. And I'll just kind of turn it over to Derek and let him fill in the gaps there.
So when I walked into the door five years ago, the people that were in the office then, you know, they had their way of doing things, whether it was by the book or what was the unwritten rules, I don't know.
Careful.
When I asked to use the barn, I was not charged. And so I took that and I applied that to my staff and staff in the office. I agree with it. We had a former councilman who passed away. His wife wanted to use the barn for his memorial service. Some of you were in attendance for that. We didn't charge her. We have nonprofit groups who we give half price or the lowest rate possible. When COVID hit, I started helping out the athletic teams at the school a lot. And knowing that these, it was parents literally just paying for a spot for them kids, their kids to have space to use because they weren't allowed even to be in the cafeteria in a large group. You know, I gave them half price discount. One of our councilmen right here has been to the park and cooked barbecue for the football team. I don't charge the football team to use the barn for their annual team kickoff party. I trade them out service hours for labor. And so this came up with the finance department being concerned that a practice that I was doing was not legal. And so I'm bringing it to you guys per Christina's recommendation for discussion on what the proper protocol should be. I've spoken with all colleagues in the county. They all do it in some form or fashion. Some use a form for nonprofits to get their fee waived, get their fee discounted. Some do it in-house. They call it professional courtesy networking. You know, the list goes on and on. I know that if I go to Canyon Creek Park right now and I tell the, you know, the director of Union County, he's probably not charging me to get in, just the same as if he comes to Marvin Eford and he needs, you know, he needs a parking pass or did before that. I wasn't charging him for that.
Bless you.
So I think we see the pattern. So this question is kind of twofold. How do you guys feel about offering discounts or free rentals to nonprofits?
This is not nonprofits.
Well, it's two, twofold. The first question is nonprofits. The second question is other individuals. So coming over to the nonprofit side of things, if y'all want to have some discussions about that, let me know how your thoughts are.
Well, in the past, when my son was in Cub Scouts, we traded out labor hours for use of the park for their outings or whatever, which I feel like is, is actually a better way than monetary because it teaches the kids what they're in the scout program for to begin with. It's, it's working for something, giving back to the community, that kind of thing. So as far as nonprofits from my standpoint, if we do trade out for service hours or some kind of other than monetary payment for use of the park, I'm 100% behind that. It's just, you know.
How's everybody, does everybody support that?
Yes.
So no charge for any nonprofit?
No.
Or, or being able to give a discount. So my, my, my opinion on it is I think Derek is, is, we've entrusted Derek to do a lot of different, a lot of things. And I think this is another thing that we should entrust him that if he sees someone taking advantage, he needs to, you know, that's something that he can, he can say, you know what, I have to, you know, you're gonna have to be charged if they're taking advantage of it. But I think, again, if everything's gonna run up to council, if everything's gonna be, then we don't believe that he knows how to do his job and you don't know how to do your job. To me, it's a discretion because it could be, it could be someone wants to have an emergency meeting or, or, you know, a gathering or something. To me, it's discretion that we should put on Derek. And if Derek has any questions, he comes to you and for you. And then if we see that, if we see that it's getting out of hand, then we, then we make the adjustments from there. They just can't legislate everything.
I think Derek can do his job very well, but I think he needs some guidelines. And I think Christina wants us to give some guidelines. I don't think it's, you know, because it's like, I don't think, I don't, there's gotta be something written, you know, guys know a good policy. But there's gotta be something written down on what it is. So if it's a, if it's the Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, football team, and then they get, you know, X number of hours of community service, or if it's a nonprofit, then they get it at 50%. But what if some nonprofit that Derek doesn't like rolls up and he's like, man, I'm gonna charge you full price?
And I'm, I'm agreement with keeping a doc, documenting, documenting what it is or someone puts it in. But what I don't want is anybody that wants to do something with the barn's gotta come to council and go, alright, are you gonna approve?
That's why I'm saying, let's, let's tell now.
But it should be documented so that
Right.
For tracking purposes.
For tracking purposes, so we could, if we want to audit it, we can go in. But I don't think that's something that, I just don't believe it's something that should be run up to council.
So what I'm hearing is that everyone is in agreement with Derek having some level of discretion to offset the cost of rental fees with community service hours for 501(c)(3).
Any, any 501(c)(3) or just the ones that are in Marvin?
That's not what I'm requesting.
I'm asking.
Okay, so nonprofit groups, we've traditionally given them the lowest rate possible.
Which is what?
Which is the resident rate.
Okay.
Right? The, the groups that I'm looking to trade out labor hours for are like groups that I know and have a relationship with, the Cub Scouts, the Eagle Scouts, the school teams.
Those are all nonprofits?
They're local nonprofits, like within Marvin's.
The school's not a, doesn't, is not a 501(c)(3).
The band is.
Well, I don't, the band doesn't come to the park.
The band is.
If they, if they also, they can, but I'm not gonna charge them.
They had the, last fall, uh, spring, they had the give them that award for the band and the barn. I was there.
I think that the, the bottom line is, is for accounting purposes for Jamie, we do document, we do have a paper that says it was free or traded out for, for labor hours. So you can track that, so we know profit and loss on that from the financial part of it.
We, we definitely track it.
And then that also tracks it for if we see any kind of abuse of it that, and, you know, if Derek moves on, somebody else moves in there and they, you know, take advantage of it, we can track it that. I think that's the easiest way to do it. If you do nonprofits at resident rate, with the exception of Marvin Village centered ones like the schools, scouts, the ones that are local. I mean, I think that, of course, the scouts, you know, they want to trade out labor hours. The Optimist Club's gonna want to trade out hours because that's part of their program. So, I mean, if you can get them to trade out hours, that's probably
So there's two ways we can do it. We can put a governmental rate on there which is lower than nonprofit. I don't, it doesn't really matter how we do it, or we can do something in there that says what you mentioned, they get the residential rate. So if you're asking for nonprofits and governmental entities to be dubbed the same, then we can just put some language in the, the fee schedule to reflect that.
So, let me ask you this, excuse me. We carry insurance when someone is on there?
Yes.
Okay, so then there should be some charge to it because, you know, rather than just giving it for free. And then it's like, okay, if something happens over there, whatever happens and stuff, and there's not some sort of tracking mechanism, and I, I think I'm leaning towards government is, will give you the government rate, which makes them feel like, okay, we're getting a discounted rate for a 501(c)(3). But if something happens over there and we're just allowing them to go use it without us tracking, I don't, I don't think that makes, from an insurance perspective, any sense.
Isn't that what a public park is though? I mean, are we tracking everybody that goes in there?
But, but this is to rent like a facility, right?
You're renting time and space and securing an area.
Like if the barn falls down on somebody.
Right. So I, I, I don't know insurance well enough. I don't know the law well enough. But I do know that if, you know, it's like, well, you had an event there, so it, worse, you just allow them to have an event there. There's gotta be some mechanism that triggers some sort of charge and that's unfortunate. And it's just make it the government rate, whatever that rate is, let's be a nominal fee for that matter. But there's gotta be some sort of charge.
Who's your agent? Your real, uh, insurance agent?
It's what the label is about.
Well, most of the time what happens, you'll have your insurance on there. And it stays, it does, you don't put it on this thing, take it off the next day.
No, I think he's referring from a liability standpoint. If something happens at the barn during an event, a fight breaks out or something.
So Derek, you were saying what you would like. What, what would you like? You got interrupted, so you were in the process of telling us.
I want to offer nonprofit groups the resident rate.
Okay.
I want to offer, have the freedom to offer certain civic groups or athletic teams free use of the facilities. I want to offer staff free rentals. I just want, I want, I want the discretion to amend the fees as I see necessary. And I'm, I'm fine if a policy, if you want to establish a fee schedule or a policy to, you know, kind of keep that in parameters if, but.
I mean, I think that would be good to have something, some sort of parameter. I don't think anybody has, you know.
I just don't think we need to charge every single person that goes in there.
I think I'm okay with questioning staff, my order doing that. There should be, again, some fee for
Government rate.
A government rate for staff. Because I, you know, I don't know what, why, because a lot of people aren't resident. Staff people aren't residents at Marvin, but we'd want to give them a, a discount if they were gonna have an event there, so I understand that. I, the 501(c)(3)'s, I just think that there's, there's gotta be some sort of nominal charge for the 501(c)(3)'s just to, I think, protect ourselves.
It just came up in like an auditing standpoint by myself, like looking over the barn rentals. That one of those staff members here told me that staff gets the barn for free. And I didn't see it on the fee schedule. And my job is very like me. I have to make sure that I'm following the parameters.
What's the, what's the government rate for?
We don't have a government rate set up.
But I mean, does, but does Canyon Creek Park have a government rate set up or?
Do they, they don't have a facility you can rent there.
Canyon Creek.
I'm just using that.
Canyon Creek shelter, tent sites.
Do they have a government rate?
A barricade or down there.
Most of the places do have governmental rates.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I don't think that staff needs to pay for use of the facilities. I think that should be a perk for staff.
Well, then
But that's staff.
Then we have, then we have to change the employment policy and it's a, you know, correct?
We used to get free parking passes.
The personnel policy.
The parking policy.
It should be a benefit, I think.
But then how many rentals per year? Like, we all have to decide all about.
That, that's why I'm saying, why don't we figure out what a governmental rate is? Because I, I don't want, I don't want, I mean, I don't want staff out there every Saturday renting it for nothing or using it for free when we have other
And, or represent, or, no offense, but maybe representing a friend that wants to have a party there and it's like, hey, I can get you the, you know, thing. And it's just, it's, you're saying
I think we go down a rabbit hole. We start to look around.
You really do. And it's
Says I'm here.
Do I not have the ability to manage that?
What do you mean?
Well, I mean, if, if I have discretion, like if Andy comes to me and says, you know, he wants to have his son's birthday party there, and I should have the ability from a interpersonal level to make sure that that's actually why he's using it. If he's, every weekend, he's out there and
But then, but then you, but then you have to go to Andy and tell him.
We have a staff of seven and there's 365 days in a year.
Well, the law, the law says we can't accept a gift more than $25. So help me with that.
Well, council, council can do it.
So put the government rate at $25.
I don't know. I'm just saying, there's gotta be some
Yeah, I mean, there's ways around every
At some point, we're not gonna have kumbaya in the village. We've had it before. It's been terrible. And you may not like somebody and you're like, no, you can't use it. Well, you let somebody else use it.
Yeah.
There's got, there's got to be, I'm not, Derek, I'm not saying that like you don't have the ability to do it. Absolutely, you have the ability to do it. But I think we need to put parameters in place and then you can use your discretion within those parameters.
I think that what they're looking for is protection to you and the decisions that you make.
Yeah, that's, that is a good point that, you know, because like to Kim's point, we've had some really upset times throughout our history and it could be really skewed in a bad light.
Yep.
And make you look like some kind of villain when you're not.
Yep.
And/or we could get a, a park manager that is being unfair down the road, you know? I mean, we're, we're not all gonna live forever, but we're trying to make decisions that are gonna be permanent in the village now on, so.
Alright, so what do you think about board members getting free community garden plots?
I mean, I don't think anything should be free. Especially, I mean, I'm That's me. I mean, again, I think if it's, there can be a nominal fee. I don't even know what plots are.
$25 to take.
I mean.
And so, so board members get that, I mean.
How, how much is that community garden use?
A lot.
Well, at one point, there was, there was not a whole lot of interest, so I was just curious as to Not just for, like way back. Maybe before my
I mean, I, I think it's, I think if a board member wants a community garden plot, they can pay $25. Again, I just don't think we need to be giving stuff away for free. I mean
Again, the park is there for free.
The park is there for free.
But when you start organizing events and having people there and stuff, there should be some sort of a charge. Nominal, whatever.
And I'm fine for a government nominal fee.
Then, then what I'm hearing and is that you're wanting to take all discussion away, so Derek has no autonomy to do anything. Just put the, put the parameters in place. Jamie just pulled up Union County and it basically says, any discounts are for veterans and Union County residents. And veterans get
50% off with an ID.
And then that takes all discretion away from Derek and Derek can just go do his job. So if someone comes to Derek and says, hey Derek, hey, we're 501(c)(3), and he goes, oh, part of regulation, I'll have any say in it.
So makes it easier for him.
It, it really does. It's just like, hey, this is what council has.
Then just, then set, then set the parameters and say, there's, there's nothing free. And there's nothing, and unfortunately, you're throwing the baby out with the backboard. So when Eagle Scouts come and go, all Derek has to do is go, nope. Unless you want to, you can add civic groups to that.
I mean, I think civic groups, if they want to volunteer time and do some work in the park or do that, I think that's fine. And Derek can use his discretion there.
Here's my only take with that. Now we're, now we're managing time. Because if I'm, if I bring the Eagle Scouts in, Eagle Scouts say, okay, we're gonna do, we're gonna do time, what are they gonna do? It's like my, my, it's like dealing with my kids. Hey, if you'll give me $20 to get, to get into the show, I'll do, I'll do extra work for you. And do they ever do extra work? Nope, but I gave you $20. Now I'm having to manage, now he's having to manage, and we're all having to manage how much time that goes into it.
I think what happens with that.
So it's, it's an either or. It's either give him discretion or don't give him discretion, put the, put the parameters, the guidelines in there and be done with it.
But even if we give him discretion, it's, the same thing's still gonna happen. People aren't gonna come do the work.
I totally agree.
So then, so then we should not have the opportunity to work it off.
And we're gonna know if they do that work or not. So then the next time they come back to have that thing, it's, well, we asked you to do some work and you didn't do it, so
And traditionally, it's yours to do.
But that's one more thing, but, but that's one more thing to manage. He doesn't know, they could have said, well, no, we came here on Saturday, cleared up a bunch of brush.
Well, then, then, then I'm fine with no discretion and
I, I don't think, I don't think you can, I don't think this is something you can do. There, there's no, you can't sit on the fence on it. You gotta either give him discretion or not give him discretion. And if you don't give discretion, I think it's a pretty easy fix. You go like Union County does, says for veterans and for Union County members and for 501(c)(3)'s, you get a 50% discount. Then he doesn't have to manage, he doesn't have to manage people. But when someone comes to Derek and says, hey, can, do you mind if we use the barn for a minute? He's gonna say, not, not up to me. You get a 50% discount. Went to the regulation.
I don't like that though. I, I mean, the, the Optimist Club, the Cub Scouts, the Boy Scouts, they've all done work in lieu of a fee. It's, it's teaching responsibility, but
I'm gonna do this, like you say, setting parameters, then we need to pick a, what is their work fee? Like what, how many hours?
And that's his discretion. He come to him and say, what can we do at the park to help out? And then he says, build me some benches.
But like I said, there's either no discretion or there's discretion, so
I'm okay with discretion, but what I'm saying is, to Kim's point, we have a set fee. And that's where he doesn't have any say, but he has to say, in lieu of a fee, we'll be able to do a workshop.
But not for me, because I'm not gonna say, I'm not gonna pay the fee, I'm gonna do some work. But here's my question, is there liability? Is there liability if somebody comes in to like volunteer or do work for use of the barn or picnic, whatever, at the park and somebody gets hurt?
There's always liability.
I can't imagine that there's liability at this point. You've been doing it since the park was open, I mean, for 10 years. If, somebody would have picked up on it at this point. If there was some kind of a liability on our part for trading out work hours, somebody would have picked up on it by now or after 10 years worth of this going on.
You need to take your policy and read your policy. It will tell you in there.
Yeah.
It will, it will have it out.
If, I think this can, as a matter of fact, this did come up because they just can't use power tools.
I, I can't tell you, but I can tell you
I remember correctly, they couldn't use power tools. They could do other work, but no power tools because of the liability for insurance.
But if, if we rent it out, don't, then they go under our insurance policy? Like, don't we have like a thing if we rent something out?
We also make all volunteers sign a whole harmless agreement.
Do we do that when they come out?
No, that's not true.
We have, we have one that we're supposed to be doing that for.
It's not happening.
It needs to be happening and then, and if they're gonna do work at the park, they need to sign that too.
So I would say
Have to be placed, so it's being done, so
Well, that, I mean, that's an easy thing, is a requirement for that.
But how is tracking that?
He would have to, being the park manager, he'd have to track the fact that if anybody is doing any activity at the park, whether it be pay rental or not, they need to sign the whole harmless, be on the premises.
Like the, the Eagle Scout projects that we've had done, those people sign those forms and they file them with me in my office. Bob Nannicamp gives those to me, so.
So now we're putting more work on Derek, so he can use his discretion. I'm asking the question.
What was that?
We're putting more work on Derek to now collect forms from parents for his discretion, for him to be able to use his discretion.
But then can Derek?
And along with managing the extra time, like figuring out when they're gonna go out there and being out there and making sure that they're gonna do what they're supposed to do.
So then does Derek point them to Austin, say, you need to go fill out the whole harmless?
I mean, we have, we have a file. Whatever you guys wanna do.
But then Derek's gotta like make sure they do it because they can't start working out there till it's done. So now that just seems like a lot more work on Derek.
I don't, I don't disagree. It's kind of part of the job though, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, it's, it's running up the park. I mean, there are gonna be jobs that he has to manage. That's, that's part of being the manager. I mean, if he wants the work, he's asking for it. Why are we worried about putting, you know, a couple of things on him? We're taking some of it off by creating a fee schedule and then we're adding, just making sure that he has insurance waivers signed. I mean, that's not, I don't think that's really a bad requirement.
So there's a, but we're supposed to be doing it anyway. It's not happening.
So that's
I'm just saying, it's extra work.
Well, but it should be happening anyway.
I agree.
So it was good that it was brought up. It should be a, a policy set forth that every single time somebody signs a waiver. That, that's, it's a good catch.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a parental waiver.
Yeah, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be added work no matter what at this point because we've caught that, that, that was sliding through the cracks, so.
So if the Beta Club shows up and it's a group of high schoolers, do their parents have to sign it?
Yep, they're on 18.
It's a, yeah, responsible party over 18.
So there's a couple of things we can do.
I just tell them not to show up because I'm not tracking down 40 parents.
I mean, can we do online registrations on that?
I mean, if that, if, I mean, if that's what you want to do and not have to do that, then yeah. But I mean, we're supposed to get parents to sign. I mean, they're minors. Their signature doesn't need any squat.
So we can, at a staff level, Derek has access to a listserv where he can put some messages out to pretty much every parks and director in, in the state of North Carolina. We can ask them a couple of things, which is one, do you have a governmental rate? If so, what it is? Do you offer discounts to employees and or board members? And then how do you handle volunteers from a liability standpoint? We can bring that all back to you all. We can have this discussion at another work session. If that's what you want to hear from other places.
I do. I think that's a good idea.
In the interim, how do you want him to handle things in terms of?
Like he's doing now. Well, I was just gonna say, we, we've, we've given him discretion for however long. You continue to do it until we come up with something that, that we can all agree upon that outlines the, those three parameters.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. Just status quo until we get concrete facts and then we can make a decision on that at that point.
Does that make sure that other departments are not gonna get in trouble?
Yes. So if finance is the one that caught a couple of these issues, I think that she's hearing today that he has his discretion to do whatever he wants, within reason, obviously. Between now and the next work session, he's been doing the discretionary decisions over the last couple of years. And so another month is not gonna hurt. That's what I'm hearing.
I just want to understand, if he wants to run out garden plots and give them to people for free, then I allow that, correct? I mean, if that's what's been happening, I think that's what the board is
Have you been in any for him?
Did.
I gave one free to a PRG member who runs the community gardens for me. Felt like it was the only fair thing to do as a thank you, that she's out there doing clinics and making sure that it's clean and giving her time and
Yeah, that's, that's providing a service in lieu of.
Right, exactly. So that's, that's a trade out and you can write that in there as service hours.
Write that as a trade out.
That's service hours and that can be offset.
But I need, I need Finance to be okay with, because we gotta be harmonious in the office.
So, so just put, just put a pin in it for now. So I don't think that anybody's gonna be asking for a community garden plot right at this moment.
And I won't.
It is actually the community garden, um, renewal time. So he's offered two free garden plots to two members. Um, actually.
Okay.
For no fee. So if that's fine, they get it for the whole year for no fee.
That's 25 bucks. It's not like it's a piece.
I just don't want it to get out that we give to some and like, you know, right now, as she said, it's harmonious, but it might not always be.
I, I see what you're saying. And we're doing kind of like a, a fee in lieu kind of a situation with these folks.
We'll put that in as a fee in lieu for service until we come up with another.
Right. So you can record that as that. So it's a.
The, whoever you're offering it for, you're putting in as, we're gonna put it in as a fee in lieu for service for now. Until they come up with another agreement.
Because the work they're doing is probably more than 25 dollars.
Exactly.
Next, yeah, next work session.
I know the one person that's exposed to it. It's doing way more than what, 25 dollars worth of, so.
31st.
25 dollars about driving from where they live here.
So we'll, um, we'll get that information at a staff level. Are you guys okay with your departmental operations? You, you clear us from now until 3:31? You good? Okay. So I'll send an email, Derek, on what to put out on your listserv to get information back and we'll bring all this back at the next work session.
Are we gonna follow for rentals until then, only discounting for nonprofits at the lower rate?
Or giving him full discretion for whatever? Giving him full discretion, okay, is what I'm hearing.
Four different answers.
Sounds good. We're done. Okay, sorry. Um, all right, next up, discussion of lighting at Marvin Eager Park. Where is my? I think that's Derek.
It is Derek, but let me just mention, no, it's Derek. It's not you. It's Derek. Go Derek.
Wow. I'm just kidding.
This was an item that came up in the past and it didn't really have a hard date on it. So I just wanted to give you guys just a quick update. I truly have not had too much time to invest into this, you know, like getting three quotes and et cetera, et cetera. But I did, um, come across a vendor who, um, offered me these LED solar lights at a nice rate. So I bought a couple for us to try out.
These are the lights I saw. I was like, what are those lights for?
Yeah. So we're gonna put them, we're gonna put them up on the sidewalk. We gotta, we gotta buy the poles or try to find something in-house to use to, you know, put them up in the air. Only thing I don't really like is that they're white.
Can we spray paint them?
Yeah, I actually had that same thought. Like, could we, you know, make them black? So I think this came up with the discussion of putting some lights in the parking lot.
So the, the, the parking lot and the, and the
The pathways.
Like it is so dark.
I'm just not a big fan of the solar operated ones. They just aren't, there's a battery in there that has to be changed out annually. There's
Let's just try them. They're, they gave them those for free to try.
I mean, these are supposed to be commercial quality, you know.
So let's just try them.
I mean, we can try them. I just, you know, just from my experience, I've not had a whole lot of luck with that. I mean, they're working on it every day on trying to improve that stuff, but I just haven't had a whole lot of luck with reliability from them, from them.
Let's try it. They're, they're free.
Yeah.
Let's try it for now.
Just, just a quick update.
All right, that's fine.
I don't have three quotes or anything. So.
But they, they, they were free, right?
No, these were not free, but I can return them.
Oh, okay. Well.
So we're, we'll try them and see how they work and report back to you all later.
How many did you get?
Just two.
Two, okay.
What, what voltage did we get? Do you remember?
Without looking at the spec sheet.
I mean, they were sitting over there.
And you're gonna put them where?
Uh, right around the barn area, just kind of the sidewalk in between the barn and the bathrooms.
Oh, you're putting here?
Just for, just for trial purposes.
See, I would, I would stick them in more like in the wooded area because that's really where we really want them. And then that way we'll see how much sun they get.
Usually when it's dark there, don't we close the park?
We do. I mean, there's
Uh, I have been out there for events and it is darker than dark.
Oh, I know that.
Turn all the lights up and everybody is
It's hard.
Well, that's fine.
And I'm not old.
And that's the other question.
I'm not like you, Derek.
That's debatable.
That's the other thing we gotta decide is how much money do we wanna put into something that may only be used three or four, half a dozen times a year, you know?
Well, just try them and see how you like them and then we'll, we'll put it back on the agenda and.
Yeah, but we're gonna have to try them for a year to, to Andy's point, if we're changing batteries in here, we wanna go for
It's a year. So who cares if we do it a year?
That's fine.
Do it every May.
We're, we're not making any decision long enough because I wanna know the, the, what's the maintenance on that? And then how many, times how many?
Can you put them on a tree?
Yes, I would think so. You just have to, you have to mouth them.
You gotta get, you have to have clear.
I think if you have lighting there, you have people that
That's why I'm saying, putting trees is really where we need them.
Yeah, I mean, we closed the park at a certain time and that's, that's dark.
I mean, I've been out there.
You can still get out when it winds and parks closed.
So you don't want the light?
Oh, I do.
Oh.
I do. I mean, I think it, it's a good thing for them to use. I go out with my grandchildren and I use it upstate all the way. But I have been there in, in, in mid-winter when it's dark very early. And they're looking at me like, it's getting dark. Where's the lights?
I, I would just, I would just rather plan the budget to certain areas like pathway from barn to bathroom is a, a lighted pathway and then pathway from, uh, barn to parking lot and then lighting in the parking and be done with it.
I mean, it's not, they've gotta be up because the kids tore them up from the ground. Or people did, somebody did. So they've gotta be higher.
I just think we could do all of this with low voltage and get a very, very, uh, reliable, long-lasting system.
Did I hear Andy volunteer for that? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, I am. Seriously. I mean, I'm
Put low voltage on a hole?
Yep. You can put low voltage everywhere. We're putting low voltage all over Village Hall.
Being put holes?
So, yeah.
That's what, oh, I asked for.
Yes. We can do, you can even do 120 volt fixtures and put low voltage to them. They make bulbs to fit the fixtures that are 12 volt. So you can use anything.
Okay. So, so let's, so let's try the solar ones, see how they work. Andy, you start looking into options for over at the park. Low voltage, to your discretion.
You, uh, will talk about it. I'll, I'll bring it up or bring it forward.
All right. Next up is, um, discussion and consider adoption of revised fee schedule. This is Austin.
Okay.
Don't you like how I named it? It is now?
Um, a few changes from the fee schedule from last time. We've changed the solid, um, excuse me, we've changed the small cell wireless, uh, fee to be a hundred dollars for the first five facilities and 50 for subsequent ones as discussed. The only other changes were we, uh, compiled some of the Village Hall rental information because it was duplicated because it's just like the barn, it's the exact same fees as the barn. And we reworded something on the, rewarded, uh, the title of a fee on the solid waste fee schedule.
Where is that? Where is Village Hall on here? Oh, I see it. I see it.
It's like the, the violations table for like, was, it was exact same for the, for the barn and, uh, Village Hall. So we just made that one table. That's the only change there.
And then small cell towers on which page?
That's towards the front of the fee schedule. That's under planning and zoning.
All right. So you want us to approve this?
I need a motion.
A motion?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So can I get a motion to adopt the revised fee schedule as presented?
So move.
Uh, further discussion?
So move.
Further discussion?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. Next up is discuss and consider waiving the three quote requirement and approve the purchase of a cast bronze plaque for the new Village Hall from All-Star Signs, not to exceed $1,600 and authorize expenditure from Village Hall Capital Fund Project. This too is Austin.
Yes, uh, we are ordering a dedication plaque for the new Village Hall. Uh, I've gotten two quotes. Cast bronze plaques are expensive, but, um, it's, it's gonna be a ni, it's gonna be a nice, um.
What's it gonna look like? What's it gonna say?
It's gonna be a bronze plaque.
It'll say who the council members are, who the staff, it tells the architect and the builder of the.
Do we have to have all that on there?
That's pretty, it's pretty standard for, um.
Tell everybody?
I'm serious. I'm not kidding. Well, I mean, seriously, what's it gonna say?
There's a, it says, so Marvin Village Hall dedicated such and such date. And then there's an inscription that says, in honor of those who built this village, those here and those yet to come, let this place be the center of a diverse community, dedicated to maintaining a high quality of life.
Okay, I like all that. And then what else does it say?
Council members, uh, and there's key staff. And then we're thanking, we thought, thank the planning board. Um, and at the bottom is the architect and builder.
How big is this plaque?
16 by 16.
It's big.
16 by 16 roughly.
And where are we gonna put this?
Is that 16 feet?
Inside or outside?
Outside.
Outside?
That's why it's bronze.
Generally, that's where you have them. Like, it's on the outsides of the door.
Usually, usually to the right or left of the door.
So you want us to waive the three quote requirement?
Yeah, and, and approve the purchase. We, I have two quotes and 16 is the best I've gotten so far. And it's, that, that's a good vendor.
Okay. Did you by chance go to High Tech Signs? Does that ring a bell?
I have not familiar with them. I've talked to All-Star Signs and Bass Signs.
Okay.
Do, do we have it in there?
I do.
Do you wanna, Austin, call them?
Um, I don't know that he's gonna do it any less than that. I
Okay. Cause it's bronze and it's expensive. Okay.
Yeah, let's just.
All right. So all you want, are we telling you what's on the plaque?
No, we're just
If you really wanna change it, you can change it.
We're just waiving the, the
Is everybody okay with what's on the plaque? We're putting $1,600 on it?
Okay. Well, let's, let's do one thing at a time. This is, he's asking for the purchase. Let's either approve or disapprove the purchase.
Okay. So does somebody wanna make a motion for that?
I would like to make a motion to waive the three quote requirement and approve the purchase of cast bronze plaque for the new Village Hall from All-Star Signs, not to exceed $1,600 and authorize expenditure from Village Hall Capital Project Fund.
Further discussion?
He did that without reading it too.
All's in favor. He totally wrote it.
Aye.
Aye. He said he did.
Thank you.
Lazy eye once there.
All right.
God, he was looking at me.
I know. Okay. So is everybody good with what it says? It's not on there. You don't need to look there. He didn't, he didn't give it to us.
I might be, could you, I might be good with everything but the last two lines.
It's, it's pretty standard to put the architect and builder on, on these plaques. But if you really wanna change it, you can.
I'm not standard.
Yeah, I'm not either.
I'm impressed that you knew the whole thing.
Oh, I wrote it.
I mean, I liked all of it except the end of it.
Do y'all wanna remove the end?
I, I'm in agreement with removing the, the last two lines, but that's, that's just me.
Unless you get a discount. Well, here's, when, when you do walk into a government facility, it typically has the architect and the developer. And that's, I've read it and
Do we wanna be typical though, Jamie?
Listen, I'm just, I'm just stating it. You can, you can chew the bubble gum any way you want to. I, I
I hadn't heard that one. I just wrote that one down.
Whether we liked it or not, we chose them.
I didn't. I did not choose the
Oh, God.
One of them. That was done well before my time.
Well, I'm just saying what's typical. Listen, I can pitch a catch on either one of it.
All right, it's fine. I'll be typical. Okay.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be really nice.
Yeah, I'm sure it will be. All right, next up, number five, the skitter, the skitter.
The skitter.
Discuss.
Put that in a minute.
I beg you, go quick.
This job isn't that easy, is it? Fumble words and stuff.
You don't fumble, you just combine.
This skitter.
Three quote requirement allowing purchase of traffic radar from Traffic Logix, not to exceed $15,000 and direct staff to prepare future budget amendments.
So is this the radar trailer?
Yes. This is Christina.
We already voted on it that we would look at that because when they, they talk about how much to repair one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we decided that it would be
I was just clarifying, this was the
Yeah, y'all, y'all pretty much already decided you wanna do this, but I can formally bring back the waiver of the three bid requir-
And this is coming from COVID money?
We hadn't decided where it's coming from. There's a, the authorization is here. We'll do a, a budget amendment at a later date.
Okay. So, all right. It's pow bill. Can we get pow bill? Can we use pow bill for that?
I think we can, yeah.
I want to have some roads. I'll get that zone.
Yes.
Hot dog. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Christina on this?
Um, I do have a question. How, how long would it take to get it in?
Christina, how long was it gonna take to get it in?
Uh, I don't know.
Only reason, just for, for Marvin Day.
Yeah. I'm sure it will be in for Marvin Day, but I'll have to ask Mason because he's the, he's been the liaison.
But are we gonna have to get a sign permit for it?
Or
Temporary.
Temporary.
It's a mobile thing.
Because you're moving around and it says different things in different places. So that's considered temporary?
Well, a sign permit
We might need to change, we, we actually might need to change their sign ordinance anyway when it comes to flashing and stuff signs.
Well, we have, we have the one at the elementary school. So we should be okay with flashing.
We should update the sign ordinance to
Well, the sign ordinance has
Include this particular piece of equipment for our use.
Yeah, not, I mean, let's say not at the heart of it. The sign ordinance is one of the sections that I'm, I'm directing or getting some address.
So if we're gonna put this much money into it, we need to be able to use it as, as we want.
Told you.
What's in Marvin?
Marvin Elementary.
So the other day I went to DB's.
Yeah.
And right next to DB's is Marvin Dennis.
Yeah. Like you're, you're in Charlotte.
Yeah, I'm just, cause someone asked, I said, are you sure? And I go, no, this is, this is Mecklenburg County.
This is, this is not Marvin. Okay. Any more questions for Christina on this? All right. So can I get a motion to waive the three quote requirement allowing purchase of traffic radar from Traffic Logix, not to exceed $15,000 and direct staff to prepare future budget amendment?
So move.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm waiting for it. Did you just wanna take a nap? You can't even say anything.
Nah, I
Okay. I'm just checking. I'm making sure you're okay.
I'll pipe in when I feel that's appropriate.
Next up, number six, discuss and consider adoption of grant project fund ordinance for the coronavirus state and local recovery fund. This is Jamie.
Oh, Jamie, this is yours. Okay. Um, in October of 21, um, we established the coronavirus state and local recovery fund with $90,000 allocated in premium pay stipends for employees working during the COVID-19 pandemic. We are requesting approval of, um, moving an additional $30,000 into, um, this category as the fund has been depleted and, um, it will pay for employees still working during the COVID-19 pandemic.
I'll mention to that, during that same time as well, we adopted a return to work incentive policy. I don't have it in front of me right here, but that's what she's referring to, the 30,000, putting it back into the work incentive program. Uh, we are still monitoring the total per person max, make sure we're underneath that. So this, this likely will meet up to that match on some employees, but not others.
So is this something we've already approved or is this new money?
It is not. It's new.
But we're, we have to stay, we're still under the guidelines that they've set forth of what each employee can receive.
And is it paid back? Does it require to be paid back?
No.
This is hazard pay basically.
No, I, I get it. It's just that, you know, it's not free money. I mean, but then other communities are using it.
And they're, and, and the federal government is getting ready to ask for more under the guise of COVID.
Right. It's, it's never gonna end. It's a flipping virus. It's gonna be around forever.
So this is the money that we already received. It's just moving it from the other category and moving it within the grant fund i- into where we need it.
This should, if I, if I remember correctly, it should stretch it out maybe another five months, I think, for employees.
Yeah, I think so.
And how much is that for employee?
It ranges.
It ranges for each person based on how many hours that you work and then, um, it's tiered.
Sorry. So this number was, um, awesome. We were having the discussions about COVID money and the retreat. We already kind of in, in our minds encompassed this number. So the numbers that we gave you at the retreat won't, won't change in terms of the additional money you'll have to spend on parks and that sort of thing.
I'm fine with it. It's, it's a continuation of what they're already getting paid for, hazard pay for working through the pandemic. And it's just a continuation of that. I mean, we, we've talked about this, that this was going to be an ongoing thing until they released, released the state of emergency. And right now we're still under that state emergency threat. So it's, it's within the guidelines that the ARP funds were dedicated for, so I'm good with it.
I mean, I, I'm fine with it, but I am gonna say again, this is gonna run out. And we're not gonna be like, oh, we're gonna up your pay.
Yeah.
I mean, your salary's your salary and this is extra bonus hazard pay, but I don't want anybody to get comfortable with this and, cause it will go away. So, any, anybody else wanna talk about anything?
If we didn't, if we didn't do it, we would be the only ones in the entire world that didn't.
I'm not saying not to do it, I'm just saying.
I'm not, I'm not either.
I think, I think every, in fairness, every company is doing something. I mean, it, 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 it's like, my child just went to work for Teeter and I went to go pay for groceries and it's like, all of a sudden, like, I had a hundred dollar credit just because I had a family member working for. They are throwing, they are throwing bonuses at kid, these two, just to get workers. And including if they prove, if they proved that they had a vaccine card, they got another hundred dollar bonus. So it's, it's out there, I mean, you know, to your point, other municipalities are gonna use it. It's just, I just have to remind people, this is not free money. It's, it's gonna come to an end.
I'll be dead before this.
Yeah, well, it's, it's on our kids, right?
I just wanted you all to keep in mind, too, like Christina and I are monitoring the guidelines. Like, there's a max that each employee can make that's working through this in free pay.
That's not my point, I'm not, I'm not against. I'm not, I'm not against it, it's just, it's, it's, it's not, it's not free money. It's just the whole concept of what they've done and, and how it's been abused, too, from a standpoint, not that we're abusing it, but.
Our children are gonna pay for it.
Businesses that are trying to take advantage of this COVID time, if you will, so.
Indirectly, indirectly, you're forced to do it because if you don't, you, you, you give back. I'll make a motion to adopt the grant project fund or coronavirus state and local recovery fund as presented.
All's in favor? Aye. I'm so sorry.
Did they leave Bob?
No.
Bob, you get. There we go. Alright, next up, consider call for public hearing on March eighth at six P M at Village Hall for special use permit application two, one dash one-two-seven-eight-seven for pool in rear yard that abuts society are located at twenty-one oh one Island Forest Drive as required per one fifty-one point oh fifty-four E three. Hunter?
Uh, I got a special use permanent application request, uh, what's good for the pool that abuts, a pool in rear yard that abuts the side yard. Um, planning board reviewed this last week, received unanimous recommendation. So just per ordinance, it has to be just, uh, voted on by council after a public hearing. So just a public hearing to be set for March eight.
What name is this in?
Wedding to Chase.
Wedding to Chase.
Thank you.
I'll also mention, I think that, that it's application two-two, it should be year.
Yeah, it says two-one.
Okay.
Is.
Hunter, it says two-one in your thing.
Oh, sorry, I can fix that right now.
All over the place.
Can, can I just ask a quick question?
Yep.
I despise these things. Is this not something that we can hint that, that he? I mean, we, we have people in these, in these roles and, and it bubbled, and it still bubbles up to council.
Jamie, you have a special hearing, a, a public hearing over the pool.
If I see another corner, somebody putting in a pool and then we gotta go, we gotta, it comes to us to approve it, I'm just.
All, all we're doing is, is more of a checklist because that they, we've covered our basis. Because of the ordinance and, and, and how certain, are they gonna do all the right things? I, I, I get it.
Completely understand, but we're sitting here with a million things going on and we've got someone who's doing it and they're showing us pictures and they're showing us, so, does, does Hunter not have the discretion to?
Wait, what you're referring to is changing the ordinance to not bring these, these back to cancel. We did this a couple of years ago. Uh, planning board was highly against it. We can pull those minutes back from that time period.
Council was against it.
Bring it back to y'all so you can reassess if you're interested in going down that route.
Clear what the reason for, but there was good reason, I remember.
It was because we wanted to make sure, because it's a side, a pool in a side yard.
It's only for the ones that, that abuts the side yard technically and it's.
Yeah, but there's an ordinance that has to be followed. And all we're doing is saying, okay, the ordinance was followed, okay, that's it. I mean, that's all the, the public hearing is for. Why can't he make sure the ordinance is followed? Is that not his job as the planner?
But the ordinance says that we have to have a special, uh, public hearing for it, correct? Because it's a special use permit.
Well, it can still be, basically, the way the text amendment can be done is that you allow, it's a permitted use either with additional requirements or something like that, where it doesn't fall under the special use. But because, kinda what Andy was saying is that with a special use, you guys don't have really necessarily the rights to deny it unless it doesn't meet the criteria. With that being said, I mean, yeah, it's just an extra step. I mean, for the most part, everyone that I've done, I think this is my third or fourth one in the six months I've been here, they've always been straightforward. I think even prior to that, it's been the same case. Um, so, I mean, it's, it's up to you guys. I mean, the other thing, the only other thing it does, once again, it kind of ensures, I mean, you guys get a review, you kinda know what's going on. But, um.
In most, in most, in most cases, and I'm asking, okay, in most cases, they've already gone through the checklist and part of that checklist is the people that surround them are giving their case. So if we, if we provide you with the checklist and they've met all the things on the checklist.
It should be staff level. I mean, there should, the, the ordinance should be concrete and it should be staff level.
Well, okay, hold on, hold on, but what is on the agenda right now is not to get rid of it. What's on the agenda now is to, cause, cause we're gonna have to call for a public hearing for this one.
Let's do it.
If you guys want to change it, then let's put that on.
The next word.
And then bring, bring us, bring us some language to, don't say, do you guys wanna do it? Bring us something that you're happy with, that covers all our bases.
And, and also, if you could do a quick recap of what was said, why planning board said it, cause it would happen.
And it came to us, too.
I know, yeah, I know.
We'll pull all those minutes and we've already got what we were asking back then established, so we'll just kinda reiterate it back to you all. It does have to go back to the planning board for their recommendations, so we'll make sure y'all are with the intent and then push it back through.
Okay.
But again, even a planning board says no, that doesn't mean that we can't.
Right. Right. I, I, well, I'd like to know why, what their reasoning is. I'd like to know the background reasoning.
Again, I would, too.
But I mean, we said.
Trying to figure out why we keep, we're worried about who puts a pool in the yard.
But just, just keep in mind, though, because of that process, you're, you're still gonna have to go through this next year of this.
I got you.
At least the, the pool is easy in here.
Yeah, that's fine.
Before you vote on it, I would, I would like, before you make a motion, I'd like to try our feature on here.
It, it says twenty-two now.
I just fixed that. Can I, can I try this feature?
Sure.
Tell me if you get a pop-up on your screen.
Nope. Oh.
Oh.
Yeah.
I got one, too, though.
You shouldn't have one.
See, you got one, too.
Mine says battery low, is that what you're looking for?
No. Okay, so, council members, you can choose to move the, the, the pre, the motion in the system on the screen here.
Do you need to say it?
Yeah, you do, but you can push a button, too.
Okay.
Push the button.
I'm not pushing the button.
Bob is pushing, Bob pushed the button.
Oh, 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 did he get it? Did he do it?
He do, he did.
Okay. Well, somebody's gotta say it, too.
So Bob needs to say it, Bob pushed the button.
You gotta say it.
It's gone away now, though.
Oh, no.
No, it's still there.
Alright, let me go back to it now, cause I'm on the next thing. Uh, hang on.
Austin.
Go back to it.
Instead, and when you talk about it, you still got twenty-one in there.
I made a motion, you wanna go? Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion to consider, uh, a call for the public proceeding on March eighth at six P M at Village Hall for special use permit application twenty-one dash one-two-seven-eight-seven for pool in the rear yard that abuts the side yard located in twenty-one oh one Island Forest Drive as required per one fifty, that one fifty-one point zero five four E three.
And it's permit application two-two.
Yep. Um, one more feature.
Oh, you have it in.
It's fine, you're good. Okay, further discussion?
Okay.
And here.
Permit application two-two.
One more pop-up should be coming up on your screen.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Say aye, or push yes, or say both. Aye.
Okay, it didn't pop up for me.
Yeah, you, you shouldn't have. So now I closed the vote on my end and it's already captured.
Okay, alright, uh.
And the, the only thing about this is if we're in the new village hall.
Oh, you're not allowed to.
When we're in the new village hall, there'll be a public display and so that people will see you voting on.
Oh, that's cool. Alright, well, motion passes unanimously, thank you, everyone. Okay, next up, number eight, discussion of Innisbrook connector to the internal preserve trail. Hunter?
I don't know, wha- what are we talking about?
There's like eight attachments.
Kidding, okay. So, um, as.
Everybody's got something.
Been, been discussed prior is that, uh, the preserve internal trail is going in, kind of as we speak. Um, that's already been approved by you guys. Uh, staff was working on trying to get secure easements to have Innisbrook connect into the, um, preserve internal trail. That sort of fell through. The mayor and Ken and I met with those property owners back in, I think, October. Kind of, um, at that time, they, the property owner denied, uh, feel comfortable securing an easement. However, um, we can proceed with actually getting an easement secured with a, the preserve HOA, have the, um, additional part of that trail extended to basically the property lines, um, of the Innisbrook property owners. And in hopes of one, having that, securing that easement for the, uh, for the connector in the long run or two, just to have a connector for kids and stuff.
So technically, there's really only gonna be, probably be two connectors because of the, where the roundabouts are. Maybe three, cause those are.
No roundabouts.
No.
No, I'm, I'm saying where you're gonna access these trails from your neighborhood, the Innisbrook neighborhood is gonna be in a cul-de-sac. It's not gonna be in between some of these homes. Because if someone, I, I, what I'm hearing is if you, you get that easement all along the trail, then any potential homeowner could have, create access, no?
No, it's literally gonna be right there where we think, where we would eventually like for it to split.
Okay.
So that's where we mat.
Yeah.
That's Whitehead. So what we're talking about doing is coming over and, and just having a connector up to the Innisbrook property line and stopping it while they're doing the internal preserve trails. So that's in hopes, at some point eventually, and that's what we're, that's what we're always doing, right? We're always trying to get connections. So while they're building that, what we're talking about is just getting the connector over to the Innisbrook property line.
I, I.
Pull it up on a map, there we go.
I, I, I thought he was, um.
Talking like this whole way.
Like the whole thing and all those homes along.
No, no, just across where we would like it.
Changing the access point, that's it.
I, well, okay, so I kinda like that idea, but there's one thing that I wanna bring up. What that does is it hand ties us from so, an, another property, which I see two more properties just down from there that also access the road. It doesn't necessarily access the cul-de-sac, but it does the road that are short juts, too. And it prohibits us from possibly getting an easement from one of those properties to access it from.
Which one are you, yeah.
So if you come out the, the cul-de-sac, okay, that, that preserve trail runs that whole length, right? So any one of those homes along that back stretch could provide us with an easement.
But there's a sewer easement there, which is why we pick that.
That's what I'm saying, but the sewer easement runs the whole backside of your community.
No, no, it's this way.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, but the trail is what I'm saying, it runs the whole backside of the community. So somebody else could potentially give us an easement off, out of it.
Here's why you're not gonna do that, because nobody's gonna, and nobody should. Where are you gonna go, through between two homes?
Well, that's where we would be going now.
Yeah, okay.
You're going between two homes, but it's through an easement, an existing easement that's already there. There, there's an easement.
There's a sewer easement, right?
Yeah, so two, two things. One, the original connector from Innisbrook was yes, right here along an existing sewer easement. We still have to secure an easement for the, for the access of it. However, it's easier to secure easements on top of other easements just because the language is already there and so on. However, and it's also on Mr. Whitehead's property.
Who already said yes.
The issue is.
It's the neighbor that does.
It's the neighbor, so. That lot's completely out, even if you're talking about trying to get.
No, I'm talking about subsequent lots down on that, yeah, along the trail.
Topography kinda comes in, all of these houses.
That's right, it is pretty steep back there.
It's been a while since I've been there. And, and the homes are a little tighter there, too.
Yeah, I mean, that is, that is intention that we could do, like, I mean, it's very unlikely because it's, think of it like as a cart path and, and fire, like, you know, you, you're gonna have that screening and so on. And the reason why that, uh, why Mr. Whitehead's property is originally, um, the kind of the ideal place is one, the sewer easement, and two, kind of that big gap between the neighbors, there was gonna be enough screening here. Okay. I, I don't know if you're gonna have, I don't know if you're gonna have a property and be like, yeah, that's fine.
That was my point, I was sorry, cause when he said easement all the way along, we're, we're, we're gonna stay with the same access point.
Okay, so the, so the neighbor can dictate whether Mr. Whitehead gives us an easement or not?
Friendly.
Neighborhood, yes.
Yes.
Neighborhood.
However, they, what, what came out of that conversation, they wanted to see the trail put in.
And, and, and how many people were using it? So if we have the connector there.
I got you.
And my, my argument to them is there's, I don't see many people that say the preserve people are using it. I don't see them walking into that neighborhood to walk around Wingate. I see them staying in their own neighborhood and staying in which.
Yeah, I think this. Wingate.
It's just access for Innisbrook to be.
Hand, hand. My, also, our argument. Hand, hand, but also our argument, this, this trail ties, will tie to new village hall, and so...
And our other argument was, once you start getting your friends, as the, the kids grow and they have friends in that neighborhood, and, and they have to go out on a, a street or they don't have access to it, they're, they're gonna want access.
As a parent, I want internal trails from neighborhood to neighborhood. I don't want my kids out on a main road to go all the way around and get to friends.
That was the other argument we were trying, but it's, it's, go look around now, go drive around and see how many people are actually walking trails and stuff. It's not like it's a downtown.
It's not a superhighway, but the kids are gonna do it somewhere or the other.
Once, once the internal preserve, preserve trail's there and the neighbor kinda said, you know, I'd like to see it and see how busy and, you know, but if we have that connector that's already there, that's ready to go, and if he's like, okay, I'm fine with it, because it's not like we're not gonna ask again.
Well, it's gonna happen. The kids are gonna use that, whether there's a trail there or not, and it'd be a good thing to have a trail there to keep him out of his yards. Exactly.
And if we, if we, if we, um, address it where we're putting barriers where you can't even tell if someone's walking in there. You put the whatsoever, green trees type things that...
Many communities that do that. I've seen many examples of that, and you, you can't, you can barely even hear people through the shrubber. You can't see them.
So, so what are you asking for, Hunter? You're asking for to see if we can get that easement from Preserve up into the point where it would connect?
So, so two things, yeah, another two things. One, the original, the agreement that is in your guys' packet was what was drafted for the original connector. Um, and, and, and so there's, since there's two easements, one, that would have been signed by the Preserve HOA, and then two, the other one would have been from Mr. Whitehead. However, now that the connection's not fully lining up, I think we'd have to go back to the Preserve and, one, get the easement. I don't think it's gonna be an issue for them because it's in their conservation area anyway. Um, but, you, Kim, you might wanna speak about this, about the bridge and stuff, like, where would you... It, now it can kinda maybe be altered because, let's say if we wanna do just like a connector here, like, you can bring it up to where the original...
What's the light blue? What's the dark blue?
This is the property line.
Of?
This is the, yeah, this is Tommy's property. This is the Preserve.
Okay, but what's in between that?
This little line that my mouse is on? That's what apparently the stream is.
Okay, so what are you asking?
Well, you were talking about some type of bridge.
Yeah, I know.
But that would have to be on Mr. Whitehead's property if the stream is...
Why can't it be where it says the point oh-one miles right there?
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, but is, is that on his property or is it on the Preserve's property? Where's the property?
That's, that's what I'm, that's, we want wherever it goes across, we want that to be in the Preserve.
It looks like it's...
And that's what I'm trying to ask, is that... Derek, isn't the surveyor out there like now? Aren't they staking out the current trail? Like, hasn't the surveyor been out staking the internal preserve trail?
Yes, he is out there right this second.
Okay. Wherever it goes, if, and I, and I haven't been like on that property line to understand where the creek's exactly at. But what I'm saying is, so if the, let's say the trail's running that way.
It's real close to the green portion.
It's real close to the property lines?
Yeah.
If you wanna have a bridge and you need to probably bring a bridge up here and then have the easement run along the property lines to connect it.
Okay.
Or just go ahead and put a bridge into the property line and then we can get that being, because then, like I said, then you're, you're at least lining up for the potential connector.
Yeah, I mean, have the easement come down and then up. If the, if the connector can't, if the bridge can't be right there where the potential easement is, then it's, it needs to still be on the Preserve property. So if you need to go up, up the thing closer to like that little...
How's that gonna help us? You're gonna have to go through the creek.
You're gonna have to go through the creek, period.
If the creek is the property line, you gotta put the bridge over the creek, one way or the other.
Right, so I'm saying just move it up some so that when it's over, it's still on the Preserve.
Or, or you still do it like that and you...
So you'd have to get, so you'd have to get Mr. Whitehead to give an easement down his back property line and up the side, is what you're asking for.
But the, the Preserve's not gonna care.
No, I'm saying Mr. Whitehead would have to give more easement on his side of the line if you wanna put the bridge...
No, he won't.
On the Preserve.
If you put the bridge here, this is, this is the creek, right?
Right.
If you put the bridge here, this is the Preserve.
Uh-huh.
So you put the, so you're in the Preserve, so you can run around the Preserve over here, doo-doo-doo. You're on this side of the bridge. You can come here, you're like, ooh.
You're back in the creek.
No, you're here, you're on this side.
Well, we could just secure the easement.
And then you do the easement inside the Preserve. There's a little bit of space here and then...
Or you just secure, it doesn't, either way...
Well, we need to get the survey. It's, it's too close to call it on that map. It looks like the, the property line is the creek, so...
The other thing...
It is literally like right here, but it's not right here.
The other thing too is that all this is still contingent upon, I mean, obviously having full connection between getting this easement, is that I think if he would grant the easement in the first place, it's like, you could literally, I think, I don't think he would have a difference if the easement runs along his property then cuts off.
Yeah.
Well, what, 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 how long is that?
It's gonna be a little bit of a difference.
Where it makes that turn?
I don't know. Derek?
I don't wanna make a decision until I have a survey.
Oh, that's point oh-one.
But that, that's the thing, the survey itself is not in the scope of his project right now.
So that's what they do.
That's kind of what we're asking, but, um...
I'm just wondering how much where it appears that they're walking along this back property. That's what I wanna try and avoid, where they're walking along the side or back, whatever you call that.
I can have a survey if you can stay there.
Is that, is that fifty feet?
I need better detail.
What are you talking about?
So where it says point oh-one, right there where the square is, and all the way up to where that corner is, right there. So that distance right there, it almost makes it appear like the trail is on his property and, yeah, if you're able to measure that.
I mean, it's not exact, but...
If it's under, um, right to about, maybe a little more.
Twenty-seven feet, twenty-eight feet.
Yeah, that's, that's not that much. That's ten big walk in these steps.
I just, I mean, I just, I, that map doesn't give me really good detail as to exactly where the creek is in it, in proximity to his property line. It looks like it runs right through the middle, or the property line runs to the edge of the creek. If that's the case, then you've got, you gotta navigate the creek somewhere. I'm just not...
The creek gets a lot bigger on big, big downpours, so that bridge has gotta be significant, so that's gonna play a big...
It may run at fifty more feet up the property line to get, to make it feasible when the creek gets bigger, have enough bridge you can cross, and then come back down. So I, I just wanna see more detail. I wanna see it better detailed on a map before we make a decision.
But I don't understand what it matters, like, if it's further up.
It's more and more and more easement on the back of his property is what I'm getting at.
But this is not his property.
No, but it is on the other side of the line, so if you go sixty feet up there to get across the creek, then it is.
Um...
I, I literally don't even know what you just said.
Okay, actually, it doesn't. No, no, it, there's the, that, there's a, there's a twenty-foot stormwater, or not stormwater. Uh, the sewer easement runs on the backside of Tommy's property anyway. So if we put the bridge across, then come across, we could just, once again, get it back in line with the stormwater, yeah. If you guys look at, if you look at the plat in your guys' packet...
Okay. So I guess the, the main thing is, 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 is he cool with us using that storm easement on the backside of his property as well as the side?
Well, once again, he, he didn't have a problem with it until the neighbor...
Had some concerns.
Yeah, and like I said, the neighbor...
Neighbor didn't say hell no, it just...
Yeah, I, I said, but I said, what we're trying to do is basically go ahead and since the work's being completed out there, go ahead and get it lined up for the future intent. Either now, if it's Mr. Whitehead, maybe future property owners, whoever, to then, hey, let's get this done so we can provide that...
This has a better, um, it should, it depicts the stream a little bit better on this other...
So...
Is that where you got the little dots? Is that where you're wanting the bridge?
Huh.
On this, on that map, you've got those two squares?
There shouldn't be any dots on here.
See the squares on either side of the stream?
No, these are the TBs. That's, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, it's, it's obscured on my screen. I can't tell.
Here's Tommy's property. Here's that twenty-foot stormwater or the sewer easement. See, it runs right along the back of the property.
Okay.
So it could just line up that way.
Those TBs or whatever, that's approximate where you wanna put the bridge?
No.
No, I don't know what that T, I would have to go back to...
But I mean, is that the approximate area you wanna run the bridge across?
I think originally, but once again, it's, it kind of, it's all about alignment just with, like, I, I, it depends on, like I said, I haven't been out there and walked the property, and I might have the surveyors out there with my central book. But basically, I think all we need to know is that if, if this is something, if council wants to go ahead and add this part of the project scope as in moving forward, that's something we can do. Which, I, I don't know if I put the quote in there. Maybe this is Derek's question?
We didn't, because we don't know how much it's gonna be.
So you're asking that they're gonna go and secure this easement?
Well, I would have to... Well, the easement, easement would be for free, I would think.
I'm just, I'm just worried that we get enough easement to be able to make it work without a survey. We just, it's, there's, there's a lot of, like, gray area in there on, on where this easement's gonna be.
Somebody's cars.
My car.
Somebody breaking into the car, is that in the hotel?
Is it mine?
White, uh...
White, it's mine. I hit the keys. It's not working.
I mean, I'm, I'm all for making it work, and I, and I understand the whole concept of getting the easement for, for the, the purpose. I just am a little just concerned about, I'd like to get some kind of concrete parameters to where we know where, when we ask for an easement from the Preserve, that we're in the right spot, to make it all work.
Well, and that would be basically either, I mean, that, that, that will be figured out as in the current easement reads based off of what was originally proposed. If we have to move it for the bridge purposes, then we just have it...
And that would be something the trail builder would tell us, or the surveyor would tell us when they're out there.
We could do both.
So we're just gonna ask the Preserve for approximate and then nail it down once we survey it?
Yeah, once, yeah, once, once you survey it. And I mean, I can't imagine that they're not gonna say yes in order to, you know, get the connectivity. Again, it's in, it's, it's off of a trail that we're building for them now, and like you said, it's in their conservation area, so...
Yeah, if I, after the meeting, if I, I, I can call the surveyor if they're out there. I can go see, and see if we can just get a, just a different state put down on what we're thinking. Maybe have Derek, I mean...
I can go out there and look.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind looking at it. I just, I wanna make sure that we're just all, everything is lined up correctly.
Well, yeah, no, I don't wanna, I don't wanna just be like, just give us a whatever and then it doesn't end up working. Like, I wanna make sure it works. But I think that's, I think that's what they, I think that's what they're asking for, is for us to say, yeah, we're good with move, or trying to get it and get it correct.
I'm good with that. I mean, if, as long as it's gonna work, I didn't realize there was a sewer easement on the back of his property that we could piggyback on. So I mean, that makes a big difference.
Yeah.
So I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, I don't, there should be any, um, I mean, there should be any, I guess, clarification, Christina, is there... I guess we can move forward with securing the easements, but anything, I guess, that they need to add that part of the project scope, that would just have to be voted on.
Yeah, and, and, and we're gonna need to, um, we'll need the trail builder to look at it along with the surveyor and see how much of that just gonna cost. But I mean, if we can go ahead and at least secure the easement where we want it to go, then we can, you know, continue, continue to move forward with the project. And again, if they're out there building it, it's gonna be cheaper than bringing it back out for a little connector section.
Yeah, true.
Alright, anybody got any questions? No? Alright, can I make a motion? Wait, you got any questions, Wayne?
No, I was gonna want to see.
Okay.
Someone's gonna pop up there.
No, it's not.
No, this is new.
So I'm gonna make a motion to move forward with, um, the Preserve easement, authorizing future amendment to survey scope and future budget amendment. For the surveyor.
Is there any direction or be the, or request for the surveyor while he's out there?
Yes.
Alright, what is that?
I don't, we don't need that motion, do we? Okay, so hold on. So further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Aye.
Motion passes? Sorry. Okay, what, Derek? I'm sorry.
I wanna send him a message right now to catch him before he leaves.
Yeah, say, "Don't leave."
Don't leave.
Don't leave!
Send him that message first.
Call me before you leave.
Yeah, do that, and then, um, I mean, Hunter, you know what we're trying, I...
Yeah, just say that, that we wanna review where he's staked and stuff and look at, look at some, I mean, we just need to look at it. And if he wants specifications, we're looking at what's behind lots twenty-five and twenty-six of the Preserve.
Okay. I can send him maybe a pin drop of that area?
Yeah.
But then don't leave, because we might go out there.
Cause he should have those plats with the cat, the CAD files, and so he might be able to pull those and know what lots we're talking about and to just say, if you wanted, yeah, drop that, or just like I said, it's lots twenty-five, twenty-six of the Preserve.
Alright, thank you. Good, Derek?
Yes, thank you.
Derek? Alright, next up, number nine, discussion of Village of Marvin bracket post policy. Hunter, this is two of you.
Alright, so I've got a draft policy in front of, front. There's a few minor things, for example, title. But, uh, just wanted to basically kinda have you guys review and then with, uh, if you guys are kinda good with the intent, I'll kinda get in the background. Uh, I'm gonna go back and make the final kind of revisions and stuff, um...
Basically, this is gonna, we'll put this on the next agenda, um, but basically in a nutshell, this derived from us trying to change the speed limit signs in Firethorn with our U channels and, and the U channel was not an appropriate post for that subdivision.
Someone had to pay more to stop them from building it.
They wanted decorative posts. Uh, we didn't have a problem with it if they wanted to pay for it. So this policy basically says, hey, guys, we're gonna put up U channels whenever we have to put signs up. If you don't like it, we'll give you a notice and we'll give you the ability to pick something else out and pay, pay for it, basically.
Now, there was a very good question asked at the President's Club, HOA President's Club meeting on Tuesday night, which was, well, we have really fancy speed limit signs and we don't wanna have your ugly speed limit signs up. Well, the really fancy speed limit signs are not enforceable.
Right.
So, they need the really ugly speed limit signs if they want, and I say they, I mean, any neighborhood that wants, you know, people stop for speeding, they have to have the ugly signs. They can put them on the really cool post, but they have to have the ugly signs.
Yeah, and I don't, and I don't think...
So is that in here?
If you want it, it's, it's a straight up, we gotta have with the statute on it for it to be enforceable within the village.
Why, why, why can't we create an ordinance that says, yeah, they can?
Because, because we are not enforcing it. It is the Sheriff, Union County Sheriff's Department that is enforcing it.
We're allowing the sheriff's office to enforce it for that.
That's not, that's not the law. That's not the law, Joe.
They can get out of the speeding ticket, Joe.
I get that, I get that, it's just not...
Official.
So, y'all don't have to read this here today. We'll have it on the next agenda, but that's basically the intent of this policy, making sure y'all are good with it. We'll put it on the next agenda.
Do you want to put something in there about the speed limit signs? Because that, that's gonna be the next question. Well, we already have decorative posts with our really fancy speed limit signs.
Hold on a second.
They're, they're nice looking speed limit signs. Won't follow the spec manual, so that...
Isn't there a state law that neighborhoods are, if it's not posted, that it's no more than twenty-five miles an hour?
Sort of like thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
In, in neighborhoods? It, it's, as a state?
Yes.
Okay, can we...
So then if you want it twenty-five, it has to be stated with a DOT sign, one of the ugly signs.
And we haven't, that's already in our ordinance, but we had to post the sign.
I thought it was twenty-five in neighborhoods.
It said, well, it says that you come into Marvin, all speed limit thirty-five unless otherwise posted. That's state minimum. So then, if you wanna go lower, you have to post it, and the only way to enforce it is with the statute printed on the sign.
The ugly signs.
So to answer your question, even if they wanted to keep a pretty sign or put up a pretty sign, it wouldn't likely follow our standards and spec manuals, so therefore it would not be allowed.
Meaning, so like Firethorn, who's Marvin's roads, shouldn't have their fancy speed limit sign.
Only if they wanna enforce it. I still...
No, no, they're not in our spec manual.
Yeah, and they were done before we took over the road, so I mean, yes, they're probably not technically legal, um, per our standards, but they would essentially be grandfathered in. We could take them up or legally.
So Firethorn, if they want people pulled over for speeding, they need to have the ugly one.
We can put a...
I would just, I would just make sure they're in there, because I thought that was a really good...
I mean, a pretty place is the main thing. They're just reflective and they have the statute on them. I mean, it's, they're not that ugly. The post is the ugly part.
Like, the other ones have the black wrap thing and the little decorative hat on it.
So let me just ask, are they illegal to have to be put out?
The pretty ones or the ugly ones?
The, the pretty ones.
Well, they're not in our spec manual, so if they're Marvin roads, they shouldn't be there, but, yeah.
They're likely not.
Okay.
But they don't know anything.
Because, because again, we're not enforcing it now anyway. So if, if I'm a neighborhood, they're, they're not enforcing them anyway in a neighborhood.
Well, it should be. Well, and this, this policy really has...
We're not enforcing them over there. What, what, you don't, you get a ticket there, they just, you might just rip it up and go, keep going.
Oh, you mean a hell of a truck?
Yeah.
This policy is really just for the post, the, the signs.
I understand, but I'm just saying, as a neighborhood, I, I just need to be clear when someone asks me, or if someone, if anyone's asked, is it illegal? Because can I, can I have them put up, but they're just not enforced? There hasn't been a speeding ticket issued at Firethorn in twenty years. So why would it matter to me? I'd rather have pretty signs on something that's no different.
People, it's not gonna be enforced. To that point, why don't you just take them down and just let them do what they want to? And not enforce it anyway.
I agree with that.
Because at least it's up, because then, then you, it's never been enforced. There's never been a speeding ticket given in, in Firethorn.
But it's the mindset, seeing that they're, who knows, I mean, anyone driving by says, okay, it's twenty-five, it's in, it's in the sign. We're trying to control the speed as a HOA, but to your point, it's not enforceable. No, it hasn't been enforced.
But the people don't, people don't know that. What's kinda signs do you have in Innisbrook? Do you have none at all, or do you have any, and do they look like shit?
No, I mean, I think they're just regular old signs. They're not pretty ones.
Okay.
Um, and not, also this policy is mainly for like new signs, as in like if we have to go out and replace those signs for, to the E to B DOT. If it, one, does match up where those signs are compatible with those posts, then that's, that's it.
But it's like, it's like, when we take over roads, we then have to go out and post speed limit signs. So that we, they're now Marvin roads, we can enforce the speed limit. So if you don't want the U channel...
Yes.
We, we still, per our spec manual, we still have to put them up, correct? They're per our ordinance. We still have to put them up. So we're just giving the HOA the opportunity to put them on a pretty post, or we'll put them up on a U channel.
They're still NCD DOT approved.
Yeah, it has to be in DOT approved.
So the post is not the issue.
No, well, the post is the issue with the neighborhoods.
This is, yeah, the post is the policy that we're talking about right now. Either they pay for a pretty post or they get a new channel. Period, correct, if they're Marvin roads.
And to be technical about Councilman Maline's question, if someone puts a sign up in our right of way, we have to have an encouragement agreement with them. So if you wanna put up a speed limit sign in your yard, technically you need to... So, if you wanna put up a speed limit sign in your yard, technically, you need to file an encouragement agreement with us. Now, the one, the reason that there's not currently is because they were DOT roads before they were ours. So, um, pending no further questions, what we'll do is we'll make this a little bit more prettier and, um, put it on your next agenda. But this answers some of the concerns that we've heard from HOAs, we'll, we'll always try to put signs up.
So, you'll give them thirty days to respond? And then, if they don't, then they get the U channel?
We give them ninety days, saying that we're putting up a new sign, and then they have thirty days, I think. We'll have thirty days after the initial, um, notification, to notify, and I need to change transportation.
So, they, so they have ninety days, so you're gonna say, "Hey, Innsbruck, we're changing out your speed limit signs, they give us ninety days if we wanna get a really pretty sign." And then we get an additional thirty days after that?
Yes.
To get it, actually, to get purchased and-
So, why don't you just say a hundred and twenty days?
Just tell them.
Yeah. That's confusing. Okay, and then after the hundred and twenty days, which is four months, if they don't have a pretty, pretty thing, then a U, U channel goes up. We've been dealing with this for a year.
I think the ninety and thirty, I think the reason why he put that in there is so that they have clarification that they're actually gonna put, they get ninety days to tell us if they're gonna buy a sign, and then they have thirty days to actually get it.
Yeah, cause basically, we're sending-
I just tell them, you got, you got four months to get it up, and if you don't want it.
That, we don't, we won't know until the hundred and twentieth day, and then we gotta get a sign in the ground, so that's the reason why the ninety, it's intent. They have ninety days to decide whether they're gonna put it up or not.
Basically saying, "The village has proceeded with putting a sign up in your neighborhood, and, and our plan is to do it within ninety days." As in like that, if you have any concerns and wanna do that, and that's when you have that timeframe, and then basically after that ninety day, if it's nothing is up, something has to be put up.
So, the village will notify neighborhoods, neighborhood associations, and HOAs approximately ninety days prior to replacing their sites. Neighborhoods will have thirty days after the initial notification to notify the village's transportation department. So, they could tell them on the hundred and twentieth day whether they're doing it or not.
Okay, I think it should be-
It's not after ninety days.
It should be-
It's, well, I think that's what I should agree, is after the initial notice, basically, we're giving them a ninety day notice, they have thirty days from whenever they receive it to tell us, so then we have sixty days to either do one or the other.
Yeah, that, that is not clear, that needs to be-
Needs to be cleared up, but I like the-
Reword it.
Can I ask?
I like the intent.
Are we required?
Like I said, this isn't perfect, I've-
Yeah, I like the intent, it's just the word.
See, I'd rather give them thirty days, like, say, "You have thirty days to tell me what you're gonna do, and then you've got ninety days to get it done if you want a fancy post." And if you're not gonna do the fancy post, then it goes up after day thirty-one.
I can definitely go with that, it, it, it's expedite making a decision, okay, you're either gonna do the fancy post or you're not, so that we can keep on moving. We get thirty days to make a decision, and then we're gonna put a sign in there.
Yep.
If you wanna get your pretty ones, then we'll give you time enough to get the pretty ones.
We take over a neighborhood road, and we, the art sign is our sign that we put up, can the HOA deny the sign?
No.
No.
You're on the road.
We have it now.
It's our regular layer.
Our regular.
Okay.
Just our rule, making, making sure.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll get some of these, these, uh, changes made, cleaned up, and it'll be ready for you guys to adopt.
This is a much cushier policy than DOT would do, they would just stick a sign in the ground.
Yeah. Yeah, and we're trying to give the, the neighborhoods some options without being total jerks about it.
That's all we have.
Yep.
They're, they're going to travel. We're, we're done with that. I'm just like Joe.
Sorry, the world's on fire.
Just like Joe.
Try and stay focused, man.
Alright.
Butterflies.
Next up, no, it's squirrel!
Squirrel, it's squirrel.
Number ten, review of council minutes from the two-eight-twenty-two Villatoll Design Finishes Subcommittee and two-eight-twenty-two regular reading. Uh, we'll be honest, I haven't looked at these yet.
Oh, good, we'll look at them together.
Oh, good.
Teamwork.
Teamwork makes, oh, this is our meeting. Did all that happen? Yeah, you were late, oh, PM, PM.
You were late, you twelve, twelve, twelve.
PM, PM, this is PM, PM.
I will fix that.
Mayor Prolino lost again on the vote.
Yep.
What, they were gonna, how they were gonna decorate.
Did I write that in there?
No.
I was about to say, I'm, I'm witty, but I'm not, I'm not normally that good.
How I feel every time I go in the one.
Let me, let me pull open, um, let me pull open my attachment, I'll mark that out for you.
I'm good with that one.
Um, okay, so.
She had, um, you realize she had some, some, some things for us to-
Yeah, I, I looked at them and I, there were some that I really liked.
There you go.
Is her last name spelled correctly?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was intent to-
Okay, so PM, PM, any other changes?
Nope.
Okay, and the other set of minutes?
Oh, yeah, I like that better up top with the, if they're remote.
Yep.
What's that?
Can you stop touching my thing?
That's on the record.
I mean, you guys are good, you guys are good. My iPad.
For the record, I'm sharing a screen with Mayor Prolino.
I mean, Jesus, what is wrong with you guys?
Lord!
You guys, I don't even know.
Um, okay.
God, I mean, you guys-
That killed my train of thought, um. So, any changes to the second set of minutes?
I'm looking, I'm looking.
He reads really fast.
Yep. Derek's still sitting over there? I can't see where his chair is, I see his coffee cup, yep, okay. Oh.
Alcohol.
Yeah, when we did alcohol release.
So, that was a form for rentals that we require whenever someone wants to bring alcohol on the premises.
Do we do that for Villatoll?
That's what we, that's what you pass for, cause we have one for the bar, we have one for the barn and picnic shelter already.
Can, can, so if we wanna have champagne for the open, opening of Villatoll, we just need to fill out one of those forms?
I don't think we require one, cause that's for rental, people who are renting the facility, and we're, we're just using our own facility. It's like a liability issue.
Okay. Yeah, I asked a question, I was gonna ask you a question, I don't remember what it was now. Oh, did we get the wood for the sign yet, or the stuff for the sign?
Oh, you were talking to me?
Yeah.
I was talking to Christina.
Oh.
Um, I guess there's a back order or a slight delay on, um, the type of wood he was looking for, lumber shortage.
Okay.
Supply chain issue.
Wow, supply chain issue, I haven't heard that in the past two years.
You're at the end, you're at the end.
I know.
I just wanna see what-
I'm not touching you, I'm not touching you.
Doesn't he have his own?
He does, he can't remember his password, so he can't get in.
Are you seriously not in?
Nope.
Oh, he-
You should see-
Why can't it be just my password, it had to be specific, different passwords, and that's-
We wrote them down.
I, I know, and I have them, because it, it's, I have one password that works for pretty much everything, but I couldn't use that.
Don't say that out loud!
But it, it's stuff that I don't care about, like-
How did you vote earlier, when, oh, you don't vote, okay, that's right, I forgot.
Make sure they're reminded, what, Touche, clerk, there's a contact, what's that? But I don't have my phone with me, I forgot my phone this morning, I had it charging, somehow it didn't charge last night, so I put it on the charger.
I'm sorry.
That's alright.
Well, hold me, okay.
So, I have a whole list of all my-
Are there currently three proposals for the MHD in the works?
On my phone.
I got that alert.
On my phone.
What do you mean?
Alright. Kicking in my phone.
There are currently three proposals for the MHD in the works.
Where's that at?
At this time, information is not available on specifics, but once made available, I will update this post.
Who?
Are there three proposals? Will Owen said that, what did you say in that HOA meeting?
That's literally all I said.
But what are the three proposals?
They were, he said a potential one.
I don't have three proposals, I have three, I mean, I found, said three potential ones potentially this year.
That means, yeah. Back to the minutes.
I'm good.
Okay.
Alright, does anybody wanna make a motion to approve, I'll do it.
Well, we're putting these on the consent agenda, so you just need to tell me to do that.
No, consent agenda.
Yep, so you don't need a motion.
Okay.
Thank you. You still have a chance to-
Yeah, we need to clarify that, and do we have reports and updates? We'll do that in the planners report, don't let me forget to come back to that. Villatoll, Christina, there's nothing there, do you guys have anything?
Yeah.
I'm sure there's no updates for Villatoll.
Well, I actually got an email yesterday from Manish, um, in response to-
Running in two weeks.
Nope. And he says two to three weeks, but I think that it should be, it should be sooner than that, I think.
Real quick, before we get a CO, can't we move some furniture in?
I've already asked, no.
I know, it's a ridiculous thing, but they don't want anybody in there using it, it's got CO.
It's just furniture, I put it all in one room.
Yeah, but if we mess something up, if we mess something up or ding something up, we still haven't gone through a punch list, then we're adding to the punch list.
And they weren't even ready for punch, when they were over there, it was obviously over there.
Or we started bringing it around yet?
So, I will say that, um, just so y'all are aware, I know we, we need to address the whole CO issue for the ramp at some point. Procedurally, if I don't approve that CO when we get it, then we're gonna have to hold off on getting that done, which is gonna prolong the situation, so I'm gonna have to-
How have we not gotten the change order yet? How have they not started on that yet?
Because we have to amend the plans so that they have-
How have they not amended the plans yet?
Cause the engineer is working on the plans right now.
Again, it can't be that hard.
It's trash.
How long does it take them to do that? How long does it take Tristan to do that? They've had this information for how long?
Couple of weeks.
And for sure, this past Monday, four days ago. Um, there's no way it's gonna take him four days to do that, I understand he's got other things to do, but this is top priority.
Yeah, I, I can tell you that John Urban, John Urban was trying to get clarification from DOI before he told Tristan-
We at least had that by Monday.
That was done, um, yesterday, Tristan sent an email to John saying that he's working on it, I don't know how long it's gonna take him, usually takes him a day or two, possibly even three. I would assume he has it back today.
Well, what I can tell you, after discussing with Tyler, the grade over there, we are gonna have to have handrails for, because it's going to be classified as a ramp, because it's more than two percent from the sidewalk to the porch.
We're gonna have to have ramps, I mean, handrails and what?
Well, we were hoping to be able to get it in there as a sidewalk, but it's gonna actually technically a ramp, so they're gonna have to put rails on there, because the grade from the curb to the existing sidewalk, we'd have to go up and then back down in order to make that work. And we don't wanna dip in the sidewalk where it's gonna collect water, so-
Is that, is that a change cost to us?
Oh, yeah, that's what she's saying.
So, so, then let's go back to, you know what? Fit, you, you, get your front fixed how it was supposed to be, how much that, how much is that gonna cost you? To tear out the whole wall, and we'll wait another couple of weeks, but you go tear it out, and you tell me how much that's gonna cost, cause that's not, that's certainly not on us. But we gave them an, but we gave them an answer to save them that cost, so why are we now adding another cost to us, when we gave them a fix? A free fix.
Then here's the thing that-
The point is, we're gonna have to pay for it in order to get it done, in order to get in there. At that point, we can then go back and sue whoever we want to, and make them turn it in on their insurance, or take them to court, and I'm fine doing that.
The thing is, I think, from, after, what Chaplin said was, is that they, he could, we could require them to fix the ramp, but we couldn't necess, he's not sure that we could require them to move the steps out to our satisfaction. It has to be, it has to be fixed to be operational, but it doesn't have to be fixed to be aesthetically pleasing.
Which is a bunch of bull.
I agree, so, what we're stuck with is either we-
We approve it.
Because they wanted, they wanted to charge us to fix it anyway, so we'd have to sue their insurance to get, to recover that cost for them to do the fix that they screwed up in the beginning. So, I think-
But again, I'm fine with doing that.
The, the lesser of the evils would be to go ahead and, whatever the change order's gonna be, pay for this, this fix that Joe came up with, and then go back and sue their insurance. Cause one way or the other, we're gonna have to sue their insurance to get the money back, because they're trying to dump it on us, and we are not, as a collective group, I think, we're all in agreement, and we're not gonna pay for this mistake that they made.
No, and Christina's point is, she needs to know if we're okay with her signing the change order so that we can get into Villatoll, and I'm fine having her do that with the intent that they turn it into their insurance, or they pay for it on the back end, or we sue them. Those are their options.
Okay, I'll let them know that before I sign it, but I'm just letting y'all know that it is gonna be coming down, I'm gonna have to approve it to make sure progress doesn't stop.
That's fine.
And, and potentially, just putting this out here, potentially, if we go to litigation, they, they could potentially say, "Well, you, you signed the change order" before you went through the mediation process. So, I'm just letting you know, that could come back to bite us later.
It, it's fine, they're gonna have to spend so much money on that, I don't care.
Well, what-
You know what, I wanna go back to the bronze plaque, I don't want their name on it.
Have you, have you, I've spoken to Chaplin on that specifically legally, if we do change, sign the change order?
No, I have not, no, I'm just, I'm just putting that out there.
I would say probably ask Chaplin if that's a, if that's a legal loophole that they could do, and if it's not, if she signs a change order, if we could, if they could possibly wiggle out of getting back charged for it. I just wanna know the legal end of it before we say, "Okay, let's sign this change order, and then we're totally screwed, we can't go back on it."
But the only other option is to not sign it and go through the mediation process.
I get it, but we're talking ten grand here, I mean, that's a-
We don't know yet, we don't, we don't have the-
The other one is ten grand.
So, I would assume it's ten of the-
It's gonna be in that neighborhood, so, that's what I'm saying, I, I would, I would ask Chaplin before we did it.
But, but then it pushes everything back.
I understand, but, you know.
Go call him, let's ask. Go call him, she's gonna go call him. We are talking about Villatoll, I'm not kidding, I don't want their names on the bronze plaque.
Do you actually want me to take the names off?
I do. I'm not kidding.
Yeah, then open that up.
Why, we're talking about Villatoll right now.
I know, but-
But that was, that was just for the quote, that wasn't what was on it.
Yeah, it wasn't what was pren on it.
No, it's gonna be approved.
We're talking about Villatoll, I'm not kidding.
I discussed this process at this point.
We're still gonna approve the verbiage that's yet to come?
No.
Oh.
We're just, that's what Austin was gonna put on there.
If you guys are good with, good with what's on there.
I'm not.
I'm with Kim.
So, you want me to take the builder, the builder and the architect off?
I do. That's my vote, but I'm one vote, when I'm bitter Betty about this, I don't care.
Well, I'm vote number two, cause I'm, I, I'm up to here with this process at this point. Well, it's been-
Everybody has their issues with developers and stuff like that, but my big issue was, you know, you've been doing this for a lot of years, and you're telling me you didn't follow North Carolina state statute?
Exactly.
How do you, how do you do that? How do you miss that?
Yeah, it's both, they both miss.
And that quarter inch, is that, that's not our miss, but the fix is to make it, i- if they can get away with it not being aesthetically pleasing, that's their fix, how is that fair?
For the, for the record-
Cause that's certainly not to the plan.
Right.
For the record, can I actually get a motion to remove the builder and the architect from the Villatoll plaque?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to remove the builder and architect from the bronze plaque on the front of the building.
Second.
Further discussion? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Removed.
There you go.
I mean, I'm just.
I, you know, when Christina and I went and looked at T K's.
I'll send you guys the mockup.
We got great feedback about this builder. We got that they, they had good quality, that the ease of build and all that. But, here's the thing, I don't know who the architect was, and I don't know who the superintendent was. It could have been a very experienced superintendent that the jobs went super good and everything went fine. But right now, what we're dealing with is not what was relayed to us from T K on their experience. We've got a different experience than they did. And I, it, it all boils down to, I'm almost a hundred percent sure, certain is the actual people involved, not necessarily the.
I don't care, that, they are the representative of it.
I, well, I'm not saying they're not, I'm just saying I think it's just the difference in people. Cause we got a totally different feedback from them when we went and talked to them.
Yeah, the architect's the architect.
Yes, I agree.
And the architect, so.
Yeah.
So, Chaplin said he thinks there's a way to still approve the change order and contact, notice to proceed without approving the change order. But he did bring up a good point. He said, you're not, and I don't know this, but he said, you're not challenging the G C, you're challenging the architect.
I'm challenging, I'm challenging both of them because in, in the.
It's in the note.
In the note, it said that the G C is supposed to feel verified.
Okay.
Feel verified.
So if y'all just wanna conceptually give me the okay to approve the change order and whatever advisement Chaplin recommends, that would be awesome.
Okay, that. We'll give you that Christina. You want me to say it like in a thing?
No, as long as y'all agree to it.
So, you're agreeing back consensus to?
To allow Christina to theoretically approve the change order per Chaplin's instructions. Good?
Yep.
Um, anything else for Villatall received? Not that I'm aware of right now. Have we figured out what we're doing with ceiling fans?
We are not doing the ceiling fans, we're gonna get the credit back.
Oh, we are, they're gonna give us the money? First time for everything.
No fandeliers?
Okay.
And then what we'll do is, we'll probably need fans there.
Well, why don't we live in it for a little bit and say, I bet we don't.
Thing is, is if, if, if we really feel like they need extra bracing, I'll put the extra bracing in. But it's not gonna be twenty thousand dollars worth of work to do, to, to put a couple two by fours crossed into there and, and tie it into the ceiling up in there underneath the, the, um, the tiles, where you can't see it, brace it. I mean, that's all that is.
Labor is the actual rental of the scissor lift.
Well, if you can get a Bobcat for a hundred twenty bucks, you gotta be able to get a scissor lift for a hundred twenty bucks.
It's not a Bobcat.
It's not a Bobcat, but you're, we're talking two, three hundred dollars for, for a scissor lift to get in there and do that for a day. That's done. We're not talking twenty grand.
Oh, I, I don't disagree with that at all, that was crazy.
So, it can be fixed, we can handle it later.
Alright, so theoretically Christina, when should we be in?
I'd say plan on three weeks, but we'll shoot it for two.
So that will put us, our, two weeks would put us the week of the seventh through the eleventh.
And furniture is supposed to come in on Monday?
Yeah, but I pushed it back one week.
Woman, I missed it by two weeks.
That pushes for seven.
Should've said March.
That should still guess, that's a new issue.
Yeah, I should've said March.
Let me see if I got any email updates yet, any over there.
So our meeting on the eighth would be in there or here?
Here.
Is our meeting over there?
Yeah.
Our meeting on the twenty ninth.
It better be over there.
That's the, twenty ninth is your, is work session with PRG.
But that should be over there.
That should be over there, and then on thirty first, we should be over here.
Back here.
For this work session. Should be over there, yeah.
What about the month with the rental here?
Yes, oh, one thing I did wanna note, yes, we are. One thing I did wanna note in this whole rant situation is, um, kinda the strategy we put together at the last minute on Monday or Tuesday this week, which is that we will get the plans back from the engineer. We will then submit them to Urban. Urban will submit them to the inspector, who is actually the one that's in the field verifying what's going on. We are not going through the RTAP process, the revised, um, changes to the plans like.
Yeah, get him Tommy!
That whole process, if we do it officially through the, um, supplemental process with Union County, it's probably gonna be two or three weeks out before we get an okay. So what we're basically doing is getting a head nod from the inspector that says, yeah, that'll, that'll work. Then what we're gonna do is come back out and get the forms laid for the ramp, get the inspector to come out and give us a head nod. And then have him come back out and field verify that it does meet the intent of ADA. It's gonna save a lot of time doing it that way, but there is always the risk that he could potentially come back on the back end and say, yeah, that's not gonna work. However, we've built in two layers of head nod approvals that we feel is gonna generate enough field approval.
We just need to get to that point where they have something down so he can come out and look, and they're diddle, diddle, diddling around.
I mean, they, this inspector is trying to make a name for himself with the change, so if he, if he does come out and say, yeah, it looks good from here. Probability of him approving it is, is gonna be high. As long as they do it to, as long as they don't change it in between him coming out there and looking at it. And then the final products, it's a high probability of him passing.
I'm just saying, like, they need to get something on the ground for him to look at.
Well, yeah, they'll have the forms put down there, he'll be able to look at the forms. That'll give him, he can lay his level on it, he can figure out the grade from there. As long as they pour it to that spec, there shouldn't be an issue. But that's making sure, and if they have to tweak it a little bit, they can tweak the form before it's poured. That saves a lot of material and time.
So we're gonna have a lot of handrails and up to the right.
It's gonna look great.
That's all I have.
Can I take them down after they approve us?
Well, so technically, if those two ramps out front are not for ADA approval, do we even need a handrail on those two ramps out there?
I don't need an accident, cause someone's, somebody in a wheelchair is gonna use that.
Maybe we just put rails on the outside, not on the inside.
But most people, wheelchairs don't actually use, um, handrails.
During the plans, I keep them in there.
But, but the handrail will prevent them from going off over the side.
Not unless they're really short, they might go underneath it.
I would say if, if we could remove the interior handrails on the two ramps in the front, it would clean it up a lot better. I don't really see that, that, the problem of somebody falling onto the porch. Yeah, I don't see any point of, I don't see where somebody's gonna fall onto the porch. If they're not ADA.
Those aren't even out there yet.
They, I wouldn't write, you would need them on the interior. Just the exterior, so you can't fall off the front of them.
Right.
I, I don't know, I mean, we can remove them if y'all want, but they are in the plans that were approved, so it makes all.
Yeah, but it's not the ADA, that's not our, that's not our technical ADA ramp, so we're not.
We can remove the interior.
We'll do it after we get.
See if, if it's.
They're gonna drill into the concrete.
Yeah, I'd rather not have them on the interior of the ramp if we don't have to have them. It's just a removal, it's not an addition, it's just like, let's just not put them in there, cause it's not a safety thing for, for pedestrian traffic, for walking people, and our ADA ramp will have to.
Let us know when they're going, when they're supposed to be putting them in, and I'll go up there and just take it.
Yeah, run away with it.
Is everybody in agreement with removing the interior handrails?
Sure, I don't care.
Well, that affects the CO then.
But I mean, if it's not the ADA ramp.
That's the thing, it shouldn't, because it's only a guard rail for people to fall off of over thirty inches. If it's under thirty inches of elevation, you don't even have to have the ramp.
But you're, you're right, you're gonna have rails on both sides, which just.
It's really, yeah.
Okay, alright. Anything else with Villatall Christina?
No.
Okay, open topics, any open topics? Anybody got anything else they wanna talk about?
No, you didn't.
No, you don't, Joe?
Go past, communications.
You're lucky I don't have.
What was the point at, Joe?
Joe, you had the docu-series.
Oh yeah, the docu-series.
That's what you had.
From Gene Stowe, come on.
For the booklets, the printing.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 um, the, um, I sent you guys that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But that's what you wanted to talk about in open topics?
Well, that, that was the only thing, that it's something to add to the, it's really Marvin Day. Cause I think that's where he wants to do this, a self-guided tour, but he needs funding for that.
Five thousand dollars.
Five grand to do booklets that basically is self-guided tour of Robin Marvin.
Do we not have a policy about donating money?
We do.
What does our policy say?
Uh, that we do not give financial.
But we could, depending on how the sponsorship goes, we could direct some of that money to pay for that.
But that's not what our policy says.
So. It's sponsored, sponsoring an event.
Maybe have a sponsor.
Sponsor him.
Sponsor him, but not through us. I can't take the money in an event.
Unless y'all want us to pay for the printing of what we would use, and just anticipate how much you think it's gonna cost for Marvin Day, and we charge it to Marvin Day. Does that, does that make any sense, what I just said?
Charge it to Marvin Day?
So, so we would, so we would have a hundred booklets, and we would spend.
Six times a hundred or whatever it costs, whatever he said.
Six hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Oh, it's six dollars a piece for two hundred. So we'd get two hundred, so we'd spend twelve hundred dollars on our booklets.
We'd take it out. I provided chair for the materials that we're gonna get.
Yeah, I mean, it goes back to, what's up, one event we went to is a black tie event years ago before you were here. That we paid for from the village, but then it was kids or something like that, but then it, it ends up, we're, we're giving money to a local charity type thing or some sort of.
I don't know.
Yeah, he's not a five oh one three C either, right?
It doesn't matter, we don't do donations to anybody.
Is that what we're viewing this as, a donation?
Unless, unless we're buying the copies for ourselves.
Well, that's what we need to decide.
And if we want five, you know, however many, then we'll figure out how much they cost, but I'm not gonna give them five thousand dollars for a thousand copies, cause I don't think they're gonna need a thousand copies.
What y'all like about Marvin Day booklets?
Well, the only, the only thing I could see, the only thing I could see is, what we do with those booklets that we have printed, we, we have, anything we don't use is at the village hall. And if, is in the lobby and someone could take one to do their own self tour.
No, I, I.
Stock them until we run out.
There are not a thousand people that wanna take a tour of Marvin, I'm sorry.
I would say a hundred or two hundred of them, um, they probably would get used in, on Marvin Day. And anybody new coming into the area might pick one up at village hall if there's some left, but I wouldn't, definitely not a thousand.
And I'd like to see them before.
Be once a thousand?
Yes.
So do you think you can get a copy of it and then we can bring it back up the next?
Well, I think we could ask him to say, hey, what do you, can you, do you have a, a draft of what you're, cause he obviously went to a printer and said, hey, here's what I wanna do. What do you have that you wanna do?
Okay, we'll, we'll chat and we'll get that, we'll bring it back up.
Next work session or ready on me?
Work session.
Oh, um, it came up in the P R G, meaning that, say if an individual wants, a council member wants to donate to, and be a sponsor. Can we not designate where those dollars go to as an individual? And, and if I'm not putting, like, say if I wanted to be a silver sponsor and donate a thousand dollars. And I, I don't necessarily want my name out there, but I wanna bring in, this is sponsored by, we talked about the pony rides. This is sponsored by village council. And put everyone's name. You wanna pitch in, fine, not, a thousand dollars is still there. And you offer essentially, we're giving a thousand dollars away of free pony rides. After a thousand dollars, if they go through that, then, then there's, it's, it's a pay, pay to use and stuff, so. I, I, just to ask a question.
We were talking about the council collectively putting in the, a silver sponsorship to be able to provide the pony rides.
But I'm not even saying that.
But that was, that was the discussion.
I'm saying, wh- why, why are you preventing me if I wanna be a silver sponsor, but I'm saying, I wanna specifically sponsor on behalf of the council, mayor and the council. Free pony rides, and it's just, put a little sign right there in front of the pony rides. I mean, is there a problem with that, or does anyone have a problem with that?
Yeah, that's, cause we, you know, cause, I mean, everybody's got, like, the businesses are sponsoring for advertisement for their business, we're just wanting to sponsor a specific event as the council.
And, and we don't want it to be a taxpayer thing, so it's, it's actually coming from sponsor dollars technically.
So am I giving money towards that?
You can choose to, or you can say no, but either way, it still, I'd say you would do it. Cause I don't want it saying, oh, Kim gave thirty dollars, and Jamie gave a hundred dollars.
I'll be sure to put out my spreadsheet to publish those.
No, I, I would wanna say, hey, this is sponsored by, you know, you can.
Why are we sponsoring pony rides?
Cause they're gonna charge for them.
Yeah, we're, because we were trying to make.
They're gonna charge for the car show, maybe you wanna sponsor the car show.
Well, the car, no, they're charging for the car show because it's a fundraiser.
Well, maybe the fundraiser's pony rides.
The pony rides, we're just trying to offset the cost of them, but that's, I mean, that's, yeah.
Shit, there went another pop car.
Get them!
Oh, he's, he's, Tommy said, he's, he's been out on morning. Yeah, but that was the second.
Well, I guess my ask is, and as a, as a sponsor, do I have the flexibility to just say, nah, I don't really want my name, cause I don't really have a company that I would, but I, can I put it on behalf of council as, if I gave a thousand dollars and it, it is technically a silver sponsorship, and I can put on there, this is.
Put on there the mayor has bought you pony rides.
Nah, I want, just the mayor, this is one, this is sponsored by council.
The village of Marvin. I just wanna double check with Chaplin on that.
I, I don't know the answer to it, it's just that, you know, because I, I don't know where we're.
He wants to sponsor a certain thing with his money, or the council wants to sponsor their personal money.
I, I, e- either way, if, if I do say a thousand dollars and it's a silver level, I don't wanna be on the t-shirt. I really don't.
Okay.
I don't think it's a Chaplin thing, it's not, it's not a liability, so I don't think we need to check with the attorney.
We went from talking about donating money for buying booklets to pony rides.
Well, it's still open topics.
That, the booklets.
We already finished the open topic about the, um, we just wanna see.
You could pay for pony rides, that's fine. We'll put a plaque or a poster on.
That's all a mask.
Yeah, he just wants to pay through the page, Joe.
No, I know.
Mayor Joe bought you pony rides.
These pony rides are sponsored by your village council.
Yeah, yeah, cause it's, yeah, it's a part of our bet, yeah.
Okay, that's all a mask.
And are, are we getting the money from council to sponsor said pony rides?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe.
No, no, so, does the council think they wanna, does the council, they wanna do it? I don't wanna, I don't wanna pressure council.
Joe's gonna cover the cost, so you're gonna pay for the full amount.
Joe and I are both definitely financially into this, and whoever else wants to contribute from the council is fine.
Jamie's already got a bunch going on.
Yeah, but.
He's going on the t-shirt.
I'm definitely in, um, on this part, uh, that was part of.
And I think, you know what, love will be, it could be five hundred.
I'll do something, of course. Okay, we'll make it happen. I mean, I wanted to sponsor a disc off hole and Derek won't let me do it, so.
Why not?
He told me he wouldn't let me do it.
Derek's against it.
Where'd it come from? You wanna sponsor a hole?
He won't let me do it. That discretion.
He has that discretion. She gave him the discretion early.
Alright, anything else for open topics? Alright, communication.
Woo!
Austin.
Alright, the list is in here, um, the newsletters are shifting to twice a month every other week. Uh, let me know if you have any topics you wish to add, um, you guys will, once we, if we get that communications consultant, this whole structure, this will change, but that, that'll come when it happens.
Jen will be in my sentence.
Oh, okay.
Who?
With my phone.
And he might be able to log in for the end of the meeting.
By the end of the meeting, I'll be able to log in.
I see no left turns on here. Have we gotten a response from DOT about the morning?
I'll check again.
We put that on our action item list, we put that on our action.
What are you, what's the ask?
DOT morning, no left turn.
I don't see any times it's signed.
If we don't get a response back from.
What time, what time you want no left turn in the morning?
Somebody asked.
This requires a reply, if you do not reply, we will consider that you okay this.
I'll go out there and, I'll go out there and put a piece of poster board out there with, no left turn, six AM to nine AM.
No, it's, it's definitely for a lot of school related.
Yeah, six AM to, six thirty to nine thirty.
Drives me crazy when people just, when people ignore the sign.
Six thirty to nine thirty.
The kids are only at school at nine, by nine. All kids are at school by nine.
Yeah.
So six to, six.
Six thirty to nine.
Eight thirty.
Six, six to nine.
Six to nine.
Six to nine.
Six to nine.
Does it have to be three hours?
Well, by six thirty, you're gonna start getting elementary school stuff, and then nine, you're done.
Well, I'll just, I'll just initiate another encouragement agreement instead of waiting for them to, to approve that, which we would have to go back through the process of amending our traffic schedule as well, so we need to.
Well, that's, that's an ordinance, CI.
I mean, if they're not gonna, I mean, I'd rather them say they'll do it before you do all that work.
Well, we have to amend our traffic schedule anyways.
But not if they don't approve it.
That's true, yeah.
So I'd rather get it approved so you guys don't do all that work first.
And it's, and it's only a temporary thing till traffic circles fill, so there shouldn't be too much of a problem.
Any changes to communications?
Sorry, I saw the no left turn on there, that's what brought it up.
You're good.
You can change the TBD submission by Marvin Elementary, cause they submitted it.
Oh, yeah. Uh, this, I had this drafted before they turned it down.
Oh, I think we have some no school days, did you put those on there?
Yes, they are. Uh, teacher work day is on there, um.
That's the only one we got till the end of the year?
No, that's in March.
Well, that's just, they gotta have at least one or two a month.
So I'm good, I'm good here. Do you guys, any, any changes?
There's three. There's two.
No, that's your.
Already separated from that.
Oh, I see.
Alright, no changes, great. Moving on, reports and updates. Managers report. Christina, block system update.
No, there's, they're already separated for you guys, it's, they're.
Oh.
But, uh, block system report, so this is the camera surveillance system that our deputy assistant.
Each one.
You messed it up then.
There's two sheets, there's a.
There's two sheets.
Make sure you don't have two of the same one.
Jamie's already got it, so it's fine. One of them, you have it, Jamie, you have that.
One has pictures and one doesn't.
I don't know what this is.
So the camera block system, what you've just been passed has nothing to do with this topic, we'll get that just later. The block system, we reported this to the HOA president's meeting that took place on Tuesday of this week, they seemed to be receptive to it. This would basically allow us to have higher public safety, um, response times in our community if we had more subdivisions that bought into this system. So we kind of just sit back and wait and see what they're gonna do, unless y'all wanna contribute any funding to this block system for HOAs.
No, we don't, but I do think that we need to have a conversation. No, we don't, but I do think that we need to have a conversation with the block people and be like, you said there are twelve hundred dollars a camera. Marvin Creek has how many different entrances? Like, and if we get the entire village to do it, there needs to be some sort of, Bob needs to be dismissed. Kind of make a motion to dismiss Bob Marklees from the meeting at eleven fifteen AM.
We should have fourteen now, yes.
All the favor? Aye. All right, so that he's not counted for, yes, so. Um, but they need to give us some sort of bulk discount. I mean, and neighborhoods that already have it should get a discount if more neighborhoods come in. So I don't know, if you want to have that conversation with them, or if they just want to.
Getting every neighborhood to do it is going to be tough to do.
Well, it doesn't have to be everybody, but even if they get.
Well, give us a discount based on.
I mean.
What are we looking at?
Cameras, price breakdown based on, okay, if we were to secure twenty cameras for all of it, what would we be at a price break?
And existing neighborhoods should also be included in that price break, because you already have.
But to be clear, we're only getting the discount on behalf of the, that's what we're doing for the HOAs.
Yeah, the HOAs.
They're buying in, we're not paying for it.
No, 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 but we're getting a discount, so if, cause Firethorn already has it, Innisbrook already has it, Weddington Chase already has it. Like, if those neighborhoods that already have it, they should also get a price break if we get X number, and it works.
More importantly.
Yeah.
Well, so are we, cause I know Mason had mentioned the village having some sort of, some sort of this block system for the village as well on top of the neighborhoods. Are we talking about doing that as well in that number?
Like at entrances, like into Marvin?
Like at village hall, for instance, where it could catch.
I mean, we have security.
Potential.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, but what Mason was saying is like, you know, this, this is basically, it's a, it's a way to, it's a safety net out there to, to pick up on vehicles that are known to have been involved in a specific crime. So if it's in our traffic circle, or at our village hall, where it's picking up traffic as it goes by, it triggers if there's a known vehicle. That Mason had mentioned that, that, that it would be an addition that the village did, a couple of these cameras throughout the village to enhance.
That's super big brother-y.
We have not entertained any of that.
Okay, I didn't know if that was said, that was something that he mentioned, it, I mean, you're right, I guess it is. But then again, if you haven't committed a crime, you got nothing to worry about.
So we, we have not entertained that from a village standpoint, if that's something that council desires to do, we need to put it in the budget for next year. So if y'all want us to do so, just let us know.
I feel like I'm feeling big brother-y. Like really big brother-y.
It is a little bit, but then again, if you're not, if you haven't committed a crime, you got nothing to worry about.
I know, it doesn't matter, it's still seeing big brother-y.
You got a public license plate on your car, so.
Um, that's all I have on that, and I'll get with the, all right, the group and ask them about that.
Do you want to take a quick minute, quick break to go to the restroom and get our food?
Food here?
Yes, just walked in.
Whether we can keep going.
We're almost done, but we can go ahead. I'll be a couple minutes, like, I don't know how long this is going to take.
Okay, so let's, let's take a quick break, do you need a recess break? I make a motion to move into recess?
Motion to recess.
And you have closed session anyway, so, yeah. All right, at eleven eighteen. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
We're on.
All right, so, do you need a motion to come back?
Nope.
Next up, solid waste, Christina.
So I think you're looking on the ordinances, we've made a lot of progress in the last couple of weeks on solid waste. You'll have your first reading of ordinances come before you on March eighth, and then your second reading on March thirty first. If by some reason we have to have a special meeting to do a second reading, because it's kind of pushing the closeness of the dates, we may potentially have to do that if I'm not ready for March eighth. But I'm trying to get it all finished, and we're about halfway there, so we should be good to go on that. Other than that, there's really no updates. On March first, we'll have a mailer, emailer, email blast go out.
Huh, can we unmute this? Oh, we're muted, well, no one's on. I know, but still. Yeah, good point. Not that they're recording or not. We're recording through here, not there, you're good.
So we'll have an email go out that has specific information about, you know, cart rollouts, when that's going to take place, their collection days.
So that's next, Tuesday.
Yeah, we'll have all that information go out. Cart delivery is scheduled for March twenty first, that, that week. So if they're not an active customer now, they should be getting carts on that week. And then we'll have all the rules set forth within that ordinance that basically dictates how big trillions can be, how much yard waste you can put out, that sort of thing.
So, on the carts, I know they were having to order all new ones with the logos and everything. Have they been able to get all of them, or are they going to be utilizing existed active carts until that?
Did you look at that?
Yeah, I did.
And what was it?
It, it does not say embossed. It literally says the logo has to be on them.
So they're going to throw stickers on old trash cans?
Is that what they're going to do?
Yep, that's exactly what he said in the HOA president meeting.
What we'll try to do is get them to actually have cut stickers and not like block square, where there's like the circular logo and then a, we'll try to get them to do a circular sticker where it doesn't look tacky. But the, the specific added up on that, our fee did not say embossed trash cans, so technically.
Contact, review the negotiation, we need to do something, because what's going to happen is, when they grab those things with their arms, they're going to destroy those stickers in six months, and they won't be there anymore.
Okay.
So.
They're just going to have to keep replacing them, because they have to have.
Yeah, well, yeah, I guess, but how do we enforce that now? Six months from now, when all the stickers are torn off, what do we do with that?
Yeah. We need to tell people that if their stickers get gone, they need to tell us.
Yeah, but how do we, how do we enforce them replacing them, is what my question is.
I really honestly don't know.
Right.
Because, because our contract says they have to have the logo on them. So if the sticker gets ripped off, they got to replace the sticker. Cause then it no longer has the logo on there.
Okay.
That's how you enforce it, right?
Yeah, I think, I think his point is like, how do we make sure they, do we have teeth?
Do we have teeth to make sure they do it? And is it, are they going to come back and say, well, it's half of it's still there?
Yeah.
You know, that kind of thing. I want to try to get around that, but I don't know how we do that. I guess that's a Chaplain question.
Yeah, so that's basically where we're at, is the ordinance has to be done, and then we're pretty much, we should be finished. I do think Chaplain and I have been going round and round about this topic of preventing other vendors from entering our streets to service these donut holes in Weddington Chase, for example. He thinks that it is illegal to do that, and he's pretty much holding his feet to the fire on that. So I don't know if we're going to be able to prohibit that happen, but I will say, just naturally speaking, I don't think a garbage vendor is going to want to service one or two houses in an HOA. Like, it's just not a profitable practice, I think. So I think it may naturally weed itself out.
Can we, can we request that active be proactive with this? And offer these people in those donut holes the same pricing as what we're.
No, hell no. That is, that is a reason that you should come on in Marvin and get cheaper trash.
The only, the other side of that though, Kim, is, is to try to keep it consistent with active being the only ones on our streets.
I want to make sure that they have reasons.
Right, I mean, I get both sides of the story.
But Christina is right, if Waste Connections has one house in a neighborhood, or two houses in a neighborhood, they're not going to service them anymore.
Willow Creek, I think, has twelve or fourteen homes, that's probably the most donut holes in a single neighborhood. That might be the only neighborhood where there's a significant issue with that.
Do you own those roads yet?
I don't think we did, no, we don't.
Don't worry about it yet.
Just letting you know, though.
Well, we've already set the rates too for people not living in Marvin. That's all I have on solid waste, unless y'all have other questions.
I learned a lot about the recycling.
Learned a lot about glass.
When it's out, throw it out.
You know that and the.
But that's completely contrary to what it was twenty years ago. Like, even like little Starbucks coffee cups, you think those are recyclable?
Most things aren't.
No, no.
But you talk about that all the trash cans roll out the new ones, they were manufactured here in Charlotte.
That's you, Jamie.
Any other questions on solid waste? Um, moving on to the initiating development policy, there's been some questions about this. And it's honestly a little bit hard sometimes when we have developers that want to have meetings, because we get requests. For example, a developer might just want to hear feedback from two council members as to the receptiveness of this potential idea. And our, you know, we're bound by this policy that council sets, twenty nineteen-ish. So we want a job to review it, it's before you tell me, you know, what portions you like, what portions you want to get rid of, or add to. If anybody has anything specific they want to live in stuff. Or y'all may like it, I don't know.
I just think it's so wordy and so trying to catch somebody doing something wrong, and, I mean, we know who, we know who put it together. Actually, two people put it together. And it just doesn't, it's just, we, I would much rather Hunter go through this and tell, tell us what works.
Okay.
In terms of like, when he has had people come to him, and like, than us sit here and go through it. Because we can sit here and say, well, you know, that sounds good, and Hunter's like, yeah, but that's just not realistic. The majority of this document is not realistic, I don't think.
Well, the reality is y'all have processes in the ordinance anyways. So we could just, I mean, if y'all don't want this, we don't need it. The ordinance dictates the process, and it's ridiculous.
Yeah, having a casual conversation about, well, do I even bother going through the channel? Or, you know, do you think this is going to even go anywhere or not?
I think the intent of this policy was to make sure that wasn't one council member that, that basically said, hey, yeah, I like your idea, let's, let's get it performed, and I'll make sure it gets approved.
Right, no.
I think that was the intent.
Right, I mean, there's, the way it's written, there's no way we could do that anyway. It's just, so having a casual conversation before somebody puts a lot of time and effort into something, do you think this is going to be received or not? Shouldn't be any difficulty.
So do y'all want to keep the policy and let Hunter go through it, or would you rather just get rid of it and let the ordinance dictate what we do?
I mean, we have an ordinance for a reason. I don't want to let the ordinance do that.
Either way, we'll bring it back to y'all for, we'll put it on the consent. But if, I mean, if someone leans strongly one way or another, that can help guide what we do at a staff level to take the next steps.
I have no leaning.
So, you said clear on consent?
Which way they want to do it.
I mean, I, I would, I say leaning towards the ordinance.
No, so leaning towards our mental dis.
Of the ordinance.
Yeah.
We have an ordinance for developers, and what the development process is.
Is Christina's point, is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah. Joe, you've been through this with more developers and whatnot than most, so.
And what are we basically saying again, just to be clear?
Get rid of the initiating development policy with this crazy thing that Mary and Robert put together.
I was just basically saying, we have ordinance that dictates.
I know they did.
So my question was, do they want to amend this policy, or do they want to let the ordinance dictate this thing?
I mean, the day that I got initiated, initiated, the day I got sworn in, they talked about this for an hour and a half before that.
I think the only reason we, wasn't this supposed to be for taking them a lot of money? Or is it?
No, this, this is, this is trying to catch me with an aha moment. It's all it is.
Do you, do you like the ordinance covers?
Yeah, the ordinance covers basically like, for example, like that pre-application meeting and PI and stuff. It's like, this, this policy kind of gets into where it's like, you guys aren't supposed to, I mean, it's like, kind of, it's like I have to be the mediator, like either at, like either trying to get all the information, relay exactly what the request is, and so, I think it'd be just simpler if we, I mean, however we do it, this policy just kind of hinders slash brings up a lot of red flags on how to even maneuver that. But the, our ordinance covers the development process already, I mean, and that's just the thing, is no matter what the development is, it still has to go through that approval.
And it's also if you're planning.
So all this does is say, hey, Joe, you can't listen to me say, what do you think, do you think Marvin would, would likely approve this conceptual plan I have?
Yeah.
You being a developer, or you being you?
No, he's being a developer.
Me being a developer, I can't, this policy says, I can't come to you and say, Joe, what do you think about this plan? Do you think that the council would entertain it or not? And you could say yes or no. This says you can't do that. I say, see the developers and us, a lot of work, and if somebody comes to me and says, what do you think? Do you think that it would be adopted or not? I can, I then am free to say yes or no, but you still have to go through the whole planning process for it to be anything efficient.
And I'm one person, I'm one vote.
One person, right, so, you know, I think it's, I think it's really fair for somebody to say, hey, what do you think about this? Before I put all the work and time and effort into it, what do you think? It's just your opinion. And then you can either go or not go with the opinion, but I don't think that this is doing anybody any favors.
No, I think it creates, it allows really it to be more efficient and effective, like I think, because then it's like, if it's somewhere, if, yeah, if you know that something the council is going to consider, then obviously they'll, they're going to have to go through that process one way or another. But they go ahead and get some of that valid input that would maybe come up in some of that discussion when it's at council, and why not go ahead and have that prepared? And so we can just keep it moving forward, or, or once again, if not, I mean, so, I, it.
So we'll put, I'm hearing that everyone wants to get rid of the policy as we're here.
I mean, I like the policy, but I don't like the policy.
Okay, so we'll get that on the next agenda and just put it in the consent.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Um, two other things that I don't have, is that all on the agenda?
That's all you have.
That's all on the agenda.
Two other things that I don't have on the agenda, I wanted to mention real fast, is the NCDOT contract that we all approved at the last meeting.
Do they want to change it again?
Yes, but it's to our benefit, so I just wanted to let y'all know, I'm just going to sign it, because it basically gives us protections. I was trying to find the verbiage and read it to you, but it basically gives us protections that if prices go over, then what's expected in construction, we're not required to pay anything additional.
Oh, we're not required to pay those overruns?
Why did they, why did they put that change in there, do you know?
I don't know.
Cause they're expecting prices to go up?
Yeah, but, but then, why would they put that in there? There, there, listen, there's a reason that sometimes if something sounds good, hey, come over here and you get the free lobster dinner. Well, it ain't free, and they're wanting something.
The timeshare scam.
Right.
Let me find the email. Oh, yeah, the timeshare scam.
Or are they just trying to sweeten the pot and make sure it gets through? I mean, I, you know, they, they got a lot riding on this.
I'm always just, I'm just always leery with what some, some gives us, our benefit.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I'm with you, but it's your benefit. There's a lot riding on this for that, so they want to make sure it gets done.
This was the only thing that was added, the department shall review estimated total project cost with the municipality prior to awarding the construction cost. Should it be determined by the department at the aforementioned time, place, or whatever, prior to completion of work, if the total project will exceed the total funded amount of two point seven million, the department will notify the municipality that costs will exceed the funded, funded amount. The municipality is not responsible for any expenditure by the department during construction over the total funded project for which the notification was not provided. Yeah, so basically, if it, if it goes over two point seven, we're not required to pay anything additional.
Oh, this is the brownback construction, not the, the other utility thing.
Should the actual expenses then exceed the total, should actual expenses then exceed the total funded amount, the department shall bill.
The municipality.
Yeah. So that's, that's really it. I'm going to just, I mean, Chaplain's reviewed it, he's fine with it, if y'all are cool with it, I'm just going to sign it.
If Chaplain's fine with it, I'm fine with it, but I just, it just, it gives me a little kind of a weird, yeah, weird feeling that somebody's going to do something to get it.
Or did somebody pull some strings and give us a little protection?
That's what I, that's what I thought.
You know, just to give us a little protection, maybe somebody got a little.
Any, any other concern?
That's what it did.
No, that's what I thought, though, Andy.
There's a possibility that, that, yeah, somebody's fighting for us a little bit on the state level.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, as long as Chaplain's fine with it, I'm fine with it. Okay, and then the last thing, I actually just got an email back from Urban about village hall. Uh, the sketch, the civil sketch has been done, so that's done. So the architect's now putting the details on that. They'll submit it to the county. Just a head nod. We need to know if you want the ramp sides to be concrete or faced with brick since the ramp At the far end, Since this ramp is at the far end, concrete, concrete form would make the most sense and then expedite the process.
But there's, I mean, there's concrete on the other side, so it should just be concrete. There shouldn't be extra brick over there because then it's going to be a lot of kilter.
All right, so let's think about this for a minute. That into the porch, they're going to have to put in a ramp because it's going to go up a little bit more than just a 2%. Great. So there's going to be a little bit of exposure on that outward facing part of the ramp.
Does it, does it back up to concrete or, or grass?
There's another sidewalk. So let me ask you this. It's in the plan for that sidewalk to extend All the way over that is below the, coming off wheelchair ramp on that side. So then you've got the porch that's this much higher than that sidewalk elevation. And you've got about this much room between them. We're going to have a big grade differential in there. So we're going to be looking at the front of that concrete.
Will you put plant, I mean, I asked my question, will you put plants in there?
Can, but there's not much room in there. I'm, I'm really leaning towards Putting brick veneer like they did on the steps, the little thin brick veneer on that. Because it's, I just think that we're not going to be able to cover that.
You guys were there yesterday.
Face. Yeah. I'm just not thinking that we're going to be able to cover that face. There's too much differential.
Brick veneer?
Yeah.
Hey, you want brick veneer on what, the part that comes from the porch down?
So, yeah, so on the, the front side, not the side towards the air conditioner. I don't care less. There's going to, nobody's going to see that. The front side, the parking lot.
Yep.
That, just that portion that's exposed above ground have the, the thin brick veneer applied.
Far right. If we're looking at the building.
That's the apply, just like the steps and around, you know, the building foundation, the same brick applied there. It's not a lot.
So this is what I'm saying. Brick veneer on front side of the raised porch to where the ramp, to basically where the raised porch starts To where the ramp meets the dirt.
Parking lot side only.
So the raised, so you're saying all in front of the raised porch too? Isn't it already there?
It's already there. No, we're talking from that point to the, to the grade. Yeah.
Right, so. And so he's going to work on those plans. So when can he get those to the Whoever, the inspector? Today?
He'll probably get them there tomorrow.
To get the first head nod. And then, so today, we should ask him to shoot for today. So then they can lay the forms tomorrow and the guy can give the head nod tomorrow.
Brandon has to order the sub to come back out. I've already talked to him about it because I was trying to get it lined up.
So when did it, so have him, have him out there on Monday.
And veneer shouldn't affect the CO because it's not functional. It's just, so it should be.
Yeah, but that's, that's probably, that's probably a totally different subcontractor.
Well, we should be able to, if they can word it as a punchless item.
Okay, I'm not worried about that. I'm talking about having them come out and pour it.
It's about getting the ramp in, but I don't want the veneer to hold up the process.
It's not, it won't. It's outside.
Part of the CO. It's not functional.
I don't think it will either.
Okay.
Good?
Yep, I'm good.
Anything else for you? All right, next up, planner report. Did you ever get into your thing?
No, everyone allowed me in. And I even have my password.
So there's a term in the tech world called a layer eight issue. If anyone says layers one through seven, it's an actual tech issue. If you hear layer eight, it's user error.
Say layer eight, that's better.
Layer eight.
Layer eight, yeah.
Layer eight, Mayor.
We can fix it.
All right.
I'm putting in what I have in it. It used to work before.
We'll figure it out.
So yeah, just to clarify, there has not been any formal MHD applications received. There have been preliminary conversations with property owners, just, you know, basically what now that the district's adopted, hey, what can they do? I've met with, met slash spoke with, I think, four or five now. Um, and so once again, that's why in the HOA president's meeting and even there in our, our retreat on Friday, that's, I, we anticipate probably two to three Applications sometime this year. I don't have a timeline on any of those. I don't know, I mean, I've got a There, there's some that maybe are further along than others and really have, are excited about it. And there's others that are excited about it, but just now kind of getting on the ball. So Um, from a timeline standpoint, I, I don't have any idea there.
Has that been clarified?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else for the planner?
Uh, I guess I can talk about all the Southern Spirit sign real quick.
Oh yeah, the Southern Spirit sign.
And so. Yeah, so just Basically, I have been in communication with NC DOT and Union County. Originally, Union County dumped me off the NC DOT. NC DOT originally said that, yes, it's within their right of way. It's in violation. They were going to remove it. Then NC DOT came out and said, actually, we don't have right of way there anymore because when they expanded the road, That ate up all the right of way. So it's actually just on private property that they don't have any jurisdiction to remove it. So then they went back and sent it to Union County because it's in Union County. It's Part of their zoning regulations and all of that. I don't know if the county has then ever did anything. Originally, the county said that they don't need permits for that type of sign. So. So at the current moment, I'll, I'll be following up with the county today to just see, I mean, if they're going to be taking any action. I was supposed to be notified if they were, but that, I haven't heard anything in two weeks.
Can you communicate that to the HOA president, please?
Yes, I'm doing that right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for the planner report?
Can I say?
We have, we have a meeting on Monday.
Yes, Tuesday.
Monday.
Oh, Monday. Oh, very nice. Yes.
Joint meeting.
No, you and I have a meeting on Monday with a property owner to annex and five houses in Marvin.
Can I ask the planner a question?
Making money for us.
About something. So I know that the, the roundabout lights were installed.
They look good too. Boy, they look good.
But I have one question. There was one light that wasn't done on Mr. Fincher's property. Has anybody followed up with that? Are they going to do that or not?
They, from what they conveyed to me last time is yes, they, that Mr. Fincher required or requested like two changes to the thing and that they were going to Get it back to him. I can follow up and, and ask. I, once again, I don't, in my opinion, I don't know why This could have gotten speed up because I, I, Tim, I can call Tim and say, hey, Tim, like, Let's get this thing signed and stuff. But apparently like, uh, Union Power just hasn't, I, every email that I've sent, let me know what I can do to help Mr. Fincher. And he says, we're good. And I'm like, okay.
So here's, here's.
Okay, I was just curious because I, I noticed, I knew that there was still that encouragement agreement not signed when they physically put the bowls up. And I noticed it's just not been done yet. So I was just following up to see if.
I asked Christina this question this morning and I really just want to know for my own knowledge. If, why do they have to get an encouragement agreement if it's on, if it's in a DOT easement? And it's got to be in a DOT.
It's not, no, it's outside the right of way.
Oh.
Yeah. Technically, I even.
Close on the sides over there, so that's.
Oh, okay, all right.
Originally.
I mean, honestly, I don't even think they need it. Like, it is lit up.
It is.
But to me, NC DOT, to, to what plant, to the plan that was approved by NC DOT, it needs to be there.
Well, then they can keep following up. I'm not that, I'm not that concerned.
I was just curious because I know that that was still in limbo when they actually did the install. So I was just curious as to what, how it was going. It's not, I'm not worried about it. It's lit sufficiently. It looks good.
Okay, so anyway, so we have a meeting on Monday to annex and five properties. Are you going to, did you get with Austin about getting paperwork that's already assigned?
They have to, they have to sign annexation petitions for the properties. They need to submit a copy of the deed for each property. But once they get that to me, I will Issue a letter of notification to both the City of Charlotte and the Town of Weddington, who we have annexation agreements with. And we can go ahead and start the process on our end, but we will not be able to annex those properties until 60 or 90 days.
60 or 90. I think it's 60.
It should be 60 days from that notification.
Perfect. Okay, great. Awesome. That's great. And then I felt like there was something else. Felt like there was something else.
If you want to, um, where they're getting the, I mean, I know we just started on this topic, but they're getting the, it is.
Oh yeah, are we doing that? Are we getting it over there?
They're getting it staked out. I had them stake basically the original green alignment.
Yeah.
And I drew another one for him that kind of goes over the creek.
Through the woods?
To the property, yeah.
Grandma's house?
Here we go.
And so I'm having them basically stake the property line of Mr. Whitehead at those two kind of points and potentially just like one or two. And then I just said that we can kind of go out and look and see which one we want to go.
That was it.
And, and then they, they can add that part of the final survey and actually then give me those meets and bounds for the actual easement or however, so.
Awesome. Okay. Anything else for the planner report?
I don't think so.
All right, next up, agenda items, review of action items.
All right, we got quite a list today. Uh, see, Derek will report back at the work session about governmental rental rates And what other towns are doing. Andy will look into low voltage lights at the park. Hunter will, um, bring back A proposed text amendment, the idea for the language about changing pools and SUPs at the work session. Hunter will, um, put the initiating development policy on consent for removal. Um, and he'll bring back the post and bracket policy. Hunter and Derek will move forward with preserve easement. Uh, I will get, order the, uh, the village hall plaque and will remove the architect and builder. Uh, Christina will move forward with the traffic radar. What was the determination for Gene Stowe?
We were going to check with him and see what it looked like.
Okay, we'll follow up and get a mockup.
Give it a number. What would he need?
Get a copy of it. Okay.
A copy of it. What he has.
Christina. Christina will get price, will get bulk pricing for the flock camera systems and will check with DOT, uh, for no left turns in the morning. And Hunter will notify the HOAs regarding the Southern Spirit sign.
Does he know, does he know anything? Um, I do not. Okay. All right, next up, review of ongoing action item list.
We'll pull up the list.
All right.
Did we get word back from the landowners about fireworks?
They're doing a site visit next week. He's going to let me know what day and I was going to invite you.
Pirate techniques?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so he's going to do a site visit?
With the property owner.
Perfect.
She seemed receptive, but she just wanted to walk the, the lot.
Okay. Just let me know what day that is.
Yeah, I, I told him.
I'll be, I'll be out on Monday.
But I told him somebody from the village would go.
But anytime after Monday, I'm, I'm good.
I'm letting Joe go.
I like fireworks too.
Just letting Joe go. Just letting Joe do anything.
You should not.
What else? Tree planting list, what are we with that? Urban forester revised the tree planting list. How are we doing with that, Hunter?
I've got it. We were, base, I have an updated tree, uh, planning list. I have an updated, uh, park set, uh, Certain sections of our tree ordinance. Um, I'm pretty sure, I think Back in October, November, I did kind of give you guys this information and instead of trying to break it up in chunks, we're just going to do one fell swoop. Um, so that will be brought, I'll, I'll follow up with him, but that should be probably, that will be a text amendment that's probably going to be coming down the pipeline in the next month or two, I think.
Perfect. As long as two years later, we'll get that off the list. Um, that's not, that's not Hunter's fault. I'm just saying, it was literally 2/27/2020. So that's great. Um, all right, what about the dwelling ordinance revision? I don't love it when you look at me like that.
I think we, I, yeah, I remember Christina kind of, I don't know.
What, what was it? What is going on?
The dwelling ordinance revision? I don't know.
Me and Rue have worked on that line much a long time ago.
It's the definition of dwelling, single family dwelling.
Send back to planning board for review from the council.
That can be removed because the, the definition dwelling changed with 160D and was in part of those 160D changes.
Let them take it on out. Love it. Get rid of it then. Okay. Uh, roundabout lighting telecom wires seem to be adjusted for light installation to be compliant with electrical safety code. Union Power needs encouragement agreement working on the lights. On the plans, could we remove that?
You can rem, yeah. I mean, unless you guys want, once again, from Mr. Fincher, but for the most part, 99% of that project is completed.
Okay, uh, signs, okay, streetlight policy.
That's something that we had approached probably two years ago and apparently we found, it, it originated from, I think, Firethorn asking for Lights on the right of way, on DOT right of way. And we found some kind of policy that we have with Union County That basically dictates.
It's going to be probably the same thing that we had to do with the, our light, the lights at the roundabout here. Basically, if it's, um, Whoever, the individual property owner or HOA can request streetlights be put up. And they'll pay the power, but in much case, if they want some type of decorative pole, the HOA is going to be probably responsible for that too. But I can, I can do a little bit more research on that.
I would just see where we are with that because I don't know where we are.
Okay.
And then it says, research streetlight ownership with Union Power.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's what, okay, that's what it was.
So maybe just take off one of them?
Yeah, I think they're both the same.
I'll take off that first one.
All right, I was, okay, so we're, tree easement is on hold. Pulte, updated park, Pulte Park, Hunter, these are all yours.
So I emailed, so I found, I found an email thread back from March of 21.
Yeah.
Um, and basically from the email thread, I had connected with the land development manager for Pulte. They seemed interested. The last email was like The guy from Pulte was like, sounds good. We seem interested. Please send more information. There was no other, I don't know if there was a phone call or anything like that. There's no other email that I could find. I've, I sent an email yesterday back to, um, that, off that thread, introduced myself and said, hey, you know, we're still interested in this. So I'm trying to get that ball rolling again with those, with those contacts.
Part of the, I don't know, there's an email about the, the one before that. What Pulte said at that time, he wanted to get everything built and closed before then he did anything. There, they've got the last three are under construction. And I don't know when they're going to look to close.
Yeah.
But it should be soon because they're like up and under.
I mean, they're sold. I mean, it's, you just, you just got to get them built.
So Hunter, I'd say if you don't hear from them in like a week, get back with them because those are going to get done quick. And if they, if they are open to doing that, I'd like to get that Executed as soon as possible.
Yeah, no, I mean, like I said, the email thread was basically That, yeah, one that they didn't want to do anything that would create some with their zoning and stuff and they understood. So Um, I just, yeah, started that, started that process again and we'll, we'll go from there.
Perfect. All right, uh, internal preserve, preserve trail. Have you executed the contract with Blue Ridge Trail Works yet?
No, I'm waiting on Derek to get it from the developer.
All right, uh, neighborhood camera surveillance plan. That was at the February work session. Oh, that's this one. So we're done with that?
Yeah.
Okay, bring back the park lights at the February work session.
They did that.
Yeah, but let's leave it on there because we haven't done anything with the park lights.
Well, let's change it to.
So just say park light.
Yeah, that I'm researching demo light. Thing or whatever is in progress.
Demonstration, not demolition.
Yeah.
So.
Research, that I'm researching low voltage for that.
Yeah.
Particular application.
I'll just make that a new, new action item because I have it on my list for today.
All right, get update, uh, Representative Willis about the roundabout lighting. That's done. Check with Union Power about the roundabout agreement.
That's done.
But is that for the new one? Or the old one? Um.
That was December 14th, 21. So that was recent. That's got to be the new one.
That's got to be the new roundabout. Must will do that when they're doing all the, yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
Because we said that we wanted to preempt it and get it in here with the construction.
Yeah.
So that we're not waiting two years to get it done.
So keep that on there.
Keep that on there.
Okay.
And I would say third roundabout. Um. Neighborhood day sponsors, we're still working on those. That's all of us. How's everybody doing? Good?
Got New York Life confirmation of $5,000 this morning. They're paying with their AMEX on the online system. So that's it.
Do we have, do you have a list of PDF that's, uh, we can send out to people, how, what all the activities are?
I sent your request over to Jill yesterday and I think They were just updating it after the last meeting. We were kind of prepping for this one. So as soon as we get that, it's on the list to send out to you.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll get it to you.
And on the, on the flyer again, I know Joe had mentioned it, where it says antique car show. Can, can we make that edit?
That was supposed to be.
Car show.
Changed to car show.
Yeah, it's supposed to be.
Was it not?
I know, I know what I sent out to Valentine Lifestyle yesterday said antique car show.
Is it, is the flyer on the website yet?
It's on the website, yeah.
I didn't get a copy of that. Did she email it to you?
I am.
You haven't checked, oh, you, don't, you're passing.
I did get my email, but I didn't see anything, sorry.
Okay, I'll, um, follow back up with her about that. So Elizabeth for Wayne.
About Marvin, Marvin Day celebration?
I have made it several days. I am working on.
It's there, I posted it yesterday.
Yeah.
You have a thousand emails, Joe. He just wants to take me out.
Oh my god.
I, I don't, I don't ever respond to them. I can see them. And one interests me, like CRT, you know, like. He's got the.
Alright, my emails are interesting.
I, I can see what you're basically saying and then I just go with it, you know. I don't have to read them all.
This is why I have to, this is why I send emails with all caps that says please respond.
I'm just gonna put it in the subject now, where we need to know.
That's all I need to know.
Alright.
I'm very rarely on my computers.
That's why I text you, Jerry.
Yeah, exactly.
I usually put action needed on my headers.
That's a great idea.
Still isn't facing.
Alright, here we go. Next up, radar trailer quotes, obtain quotes, we did that. Worked that off the list. Road shoulders, compile a list. Where are we with that?
We're, we're done.
The list is done, but where are we with filling them in?
We submitted it to DOT and they.
So we still need to follow up with DOT. So follow up with DOT.
Do you wanna change the wording on that?
We literally just submitted it.
List has been.
It's in their hands now.
This has been sent to DOT, waiting on DOT.
Yeah.
Yeah, just change, just change it.
Yeah.
Follow up with DOT.
You, you.
Okay, planned Q and A sessions for solid waste.
Are we, are we doing Q and A sessions? Are we just doing the mailers and communication?
Yeah, I mean, if y'all feel like we need to do it, we can, but we feel like we're gonna be able to address it.
We're gonna, we're gonna be.
Idea, I don't know that we necessarily have to do a Q and A. I think that flooding the information out there is all we really need to do. If they got a question, they're gonna call.
Okay.
You, you, you're gonna have to live in a cave not to hear from us at this point.
Yeah, exactly. I, I don't think we need to go through a.
Yeah, that freaks me out. Holy shit. Okay, alright.
Oh, I.
No, we're not there.
This, this second Blue Ridge Trail Works is for the park enhancements, I think.
Okay, well, I'm not there yet. I'm to bring back discussion of flock camera systems at the February work session. You can get rid of that one.
Yep.
'Cause it's on there twice.
It's gone.
Uh, execute the contract with Blue Ridge Trail Works, which one was that?
Park enhancements, which you guys, isn't that the park enhancements?
Probably did that.
Yeah. Have you executed that contract yet?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, execute the contract with Boom Brush. Did you do that, Christina? Can you execute contract?
I mean Derrick's not getting them to me, so I, I sent him an email.
What was the contract for Boom for?
That was at the park.
That's it? That's the cul, that the culverts? The.
Something at the park.
Oh, yeah, 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 it's, it's cleaning, it's, yeah, it's not the brush control, it's actually cleaning out the culverts, doing some regrading, drainage work.
Okay.
Okay, I, sorry.
Give an update
He left.
On the NS保, preserved trail connector, the February work session, just take off at the February work session and we'll see how it exactly gets staked. The connector.
Okay.
Uh, fee schedule, we've done that. Send a letter to the parcel adjacent to Marvin Ridge High School requesting their property loan for, you can take that off. Look at all the stuff I got off of the action item list.
Wow, you shrunk it in half.
I wanted to, yeah, I did more than that.
Next up, council comments. Jamie.
Hold on, let me get back to my minutes here. Go ahead, Jamie.
Um, you know, we had the meeting with PRG. Um, and I know, we know, we kinda, uh, Bob C's, planning board and all the, um, a shout out to all the board and board members for all the work they do. They do a lot of work to pull a lot of this stuff together for us. Um, and that, and so a, a big shout out, thanks to all the board members and the boards for doing what they do. And then, you know, again, once again, it can never go, it can never be said enough that the hard work that, that staff puts together to put all this stuff together and, and push this stuff out and make it happen, so without it, 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 it doesn't happen. So, um, shout out to all of them. And, um, again, as always, I just saw two cars go flying by. Um, to all those law enforcement that don't get recognition, that get shouted down and get, um, a lot of bad things happen to them. Be safe and appreciate all you do.
Thank you. Alright. Andrew?
Alright. I think Jamie pretty much has covered it. Um, you know, I, I was impressed with, um, PRG's hard work on Marvin Day. Um, listening in that meeting the other day, it, it tells me that they have really stepped up and have done a fantastic job with their end of it and, um, so, um, just a big thank you to them and, uh, staff, once again, can't thank you guys enough. All you guys do, you guys slam, super slam.
I'm gonna thank you.
Especially finance this time of year with the, uh, with the budget and all the preparation for that, so I know you guys put in well above what you should be expected to do on a daily basis, so we appreciate a hundred percent of what you guys do.
Nope, just not enough. Alright, Wayne?
Uh, thank everyone, staff, everyone associated with it. Doing a great job keeping my, my head above the water.
I'm your keeper.
That's right, and I will call you whenever.
Oh, I know.
And thanks to everyone. I've enjoyed it here.
Good. Alright, Joe?
Oh, I thought I was gonna relax. Okay, um, met with, uh, fifth grade yesterday. Um, it was a lot of fun, uh, both groups of two separate classes and stuff. A lot of, um, mentioned Marvin Day, they are very excited about it, so we gotta make sure we, uh, communicate with them and I, I think I said there may even be some volunteer opportunities, so they were interested in that as well, so. Um, but overall, real good, uh, back and forth. They really wanna know how bills and laws get passed and I gave them the difference specifically for their area of what a resolution is compared to an ordinance, and that's pretty much what we deal with on a local level. It was a nice meeting, um.
You knew that?
I had asked.
In fairness, I called him for the example, so I could show those kids. Just keep him waiting.
Just make a note right here. Just on the man. You know, I, I really wanted to, uh, take an opportunity also, because we'll probably talk about this at Wuma, um, to thank, um, uh, county commissioners for showing up, um, the whole crew. All of the county.
All of the county.
Row, um, no.
They probably had to close the office.
But in, in that, you know, some things I think we got accomplished, I think, which we saw, the wheels in action with the letter I just saw that went out. I only read the headline, so I knew what it was relating to. I did too. This has been much easier, by the way. Um, but I do think we need to, uh, repackage, um, that pitch for the donut hole because, um, and I, I started thinking about it a lot and I think that we really need to focus on, I'm not interested, 'cause I think a lot of those particular members have five, six acres of land that's not, you know, developed, it's just farm, or maybe more. And I'm not interested in that, but if you're, if you're a developer and you're putting in a group of 300 homes, there is no reason that shouldn't be a part of a town in, you know, where it's assigned to a town, because they're getting the benefit tact, uh, representation without the taxation. And that was what the kids ask, what's their biggest challenge, it says, that's, that's our challenge, 'cause that prevents, if I do this, we do this, I don't have to raise taxes. We can get a lot of stuff done if we just do this. And what I really wanna hone in on is the, um, neighborhoods, that are established neighborhoods by, you know, we'll make a rule, but anything over eight homes, maybe, whatever it is, should be a part of the town, but if it's an individual standout, I'm not interested. Um, HOA meeting, uh, thanks for the homeowners, uh, presidents that showed up for that and also the waste hauling company and block. Um, I did not put this on the agenda because it's something that just came up. Um, I heard from Lisa Thompson, who is our former administrator. And she's now working for, she was over at Weddington.
She's in Waxah now.
She's now in Waxah and, uh, she, out of the blue, she sent me, um, and she just sent me a reminder.
You didn't respond to her?
Well, I did, but I just said I'd need more information before I sent out, but basically, um, Bonds Grove and, and we can put this on the agenda in Providence, they wanna do a stop like that, a part of that one corner is ours and they wanna know if we would consider sharing.
As soon as they, as soon as they come back and pay us for the officers that we put on the corner of Waxah.
And that's exactly what I said, you know, I go, you, we, we heard crickets when we asked you to put, uh, participate, even, even if it's in kind and you put your, uh, your officers there, we would have appreciated that, but that never happened, so. I'm not, I mean, it is part of our corner, so, um, but there, she just gave me the number 1204 today, which was $355,000.
That's how much she wants from us?
No, no, that's the total number. We need, they need to come up with, we, we need to come up with $355,000.
There's no way that a stoplight's gonna cost that little.
Well, I, I don't know what it all entails.
Well, if they're only putting a light and not putting turn lanes and all that in, they might be able to do it for that.
Do you think how far that would be backed up worse? That's gonna be surreal. I can't even.
There's obviously DOT has a plan for that corner and stuff.
Well, I mean, it's, nothing's gonna get done to that corner until 2030. Let's just be realistic about it. And what they're trying to do is keep people from getting killed trying to pull out there. My vote's for a no left turn.
You know what I think they should do? I think they should take their officers and put them there in direct traffic, same way we've been doing down here, same way we've been doing down here.
So an interior answer, without going too much into this, she did say if we pay the ratio, it's good enough for summer selection and fall start for construction, so. I, I go, I just said, we need more details, numbers and what, what actually is being done, the scope of it. Um, she said, she'll run, reach out to me. I just wanted to throw that out to council. It may come up on an agenda item once I get more information.
I'm good.
Um, and, uh, finally, the, um, tomorrow meeting, uh, we're meeting with, uh, the car show group, I think. Bob and John Jones is joining me and Derrick, right?
Derrick?
Here, at nine o'clock tomorrow, so it's just basically getting all that information.
Is Dan gonna be there?
What?
Dan Wilson?
He's on the car show.
No, but he's on food truck team and that's the whole point of doing that. That whole conversation has to do with. That, part of that, the reason I wanna do there was for the food truck situation.
I don't think so, other than the ETJ stuff.
Have you asked anybody about the ETJ stuff, whatever?
We'll go back to that.
Let's ask him about that.
I'm all for the ETJ. I have been, I have been since I got on here.
Well, what is it that you want?
Exactly, that's, 'cause we're, 'cause.
I don't know what my options are.
At Wuma tonight, so.
What are my options?
So, we're forming a subcommittee, which I've been, everybody stepped back and left me standing forward, so I'm on the ETJ committee. Um, but there's gonna be three of us that are gonna represent Wuma to the county, working with this ETJ process. What we need to know as, as a group is what every municipality wants from the ETJ. What, what specifics you want from an ETJ? What are you looking for?
I want any, any areas that abut Marvin that are unincorporated Union County. We already have ETJs with Weddington and, do we not?
Plan. We have, we have an ETJ plan, but we don't have an actual ETJ.
That's what we're working on trying to achieve with Wuma, but we wanna know.
I want anything that is either abuts Marvin or that it is, you know, whether that's Weddington, Wesley Chapel.
Or unincorporated.
Union County, I want them to have to come to us and be like.
I think so. Are you okay with this?
Yeah, like the townhouse or the apartment building that is, you know, it may not have a budded Marvin, but it was right across the street from Marvin. Like, I want.
In our annexation zone?
No, well, I want, I want somebody to have to come to me and use my zoning and my planning and my ordinances for that.
So like that apartments, right, that wasn't abutting any municipality, but it was within an annexation zone of one or two, right?
But it was also across the street from Marvin and across, and, and in unincorporated Union County. So I want that, like, if it's within like a half a mile or a mile of Marvin or adjacent to Marvin, I want somebody, I want my ordinances to be enacted. That's what I want.
Yeah, I, I mean, I get that. I, I, I just, that's what I wanted to get, is some feedback from council and also, Hunter, are you available at four o'clock?
Yeah, I've already, I'm planning on saying.
Okay, 'cause I, 'cause you have a little deeper knowledge into our ETJ, what we've already established, so that you can maybe convey it.
So if I'm not mistaken, council approved an annexation plan with Weddington and all of that, I am 99% sure there's already an established proposed ETJ area that's on that same map. He'll pull it up between now and then, but that can be your arguing point from there, but I will say from a budgetary standpoint, an enforcement standpoint, if we move forward with an ETJ, he's definitely gonna need some help.
I'm already trying to get him a plan.
Should be shared, uh, with, Wuma should share the responsibility within all of our jurisdictions, I would think. And we should come up with a plan for that, for, for enforcing the ETJs.
One thing, in fairness. In fairness, I'm not so worried about Weddington and Wesley Chapel. I think they're pretty much on the same page with a lot of things.
Well, I don't know, you see what's going on at Weddington with that giant thing.
In general. I know, but I'm more concerned with the county, that one county commissioner pulled me aside and said, yeah, I'm fine with ETJs, long as I give you a mile, you give me a mile. And I'm like, I'm not even sure what that meant.
It's really important, it's really important to note that if, if, for example, if, for example, we took our entire annexation area as an ETJ, those people have to have representation on our planning board and the county gets to appoint those people.
That's fine.
So that'd be seven additional members on the planning board from the county, 'cause it's a, there's, it's a formula that determines how many members would have to be appointed.
Seven additional?
Seven additional, that doubles.
And they would all be county appointed, then they, then they get the vote.
They don't get to, they don't have a issue, they get to.
Well, they wouldn't, they would have the majority.
Uh, the county doesn't. We appropriate from within the county, or we approve from within the county.
But if we can't come up with enough people, the county gets to pick. If we can't.
Yeah, but we, we would take applications from the ETJ area and y'all would pick who you wanna.
And the county though, still has to appoint too. Like that, as in what I mean by that, is like the county has to affirm the appro, the appointment.
That's what I mean.
I don't know that to be true. I've never experienced that anywhere I've worked. I've always had the local board appoint who, 'cause that would get too, that would bog down the county too much.
When I, when I, in my previous one where we had ETJs, we would give the applications and the county would have to vote, you know, in a.
Yeah, we'll look into that, 'cause I don't know that to be true.
But they probably are only voting on ETJ stuff or they're voting on Marvin stuff.
So, and also let me clarify, all ETJ, all that we then have the jurisdiction is anything planning and zoning related. Nothing like from a code enforcement nuisance standpoint, nothing from like even to an extent like the animal, I don't even know if our tree language would, like, there's gonna have to be some clarifications, because legally, all it is is from a planning and zoning standpoint, basically. They would have to get zoning permits from us, zoning approval on any of that.
Here's, here's the thing, I, I mean, I, I'm fine with that. I think the planning and zoning is sufficient. It's never gonna happen. The county is never gonna give up that much control. It is not gonna happen.
But to your question about the Wuma helping out, it would be, it would be variable from every single jurisdiction. So I would find it highly unlikely that they could appoint one person to do all jurisdictions, because they're all gonna be different. I could be wrong, but I would find.
I mean, they would just, we would have our own. The jurisdictional limits and what
Yeah, it would go along.
applies to each jurisdiction, but they could enforce it. If we had one person doing it, that everybody pitched in or two people, and everybody pitched into their salary and they could just enforce the ETJs, and that's all they did, that would probably be the most cost-effective way to do it. As long as the, the people that are enforcing it know each zone and which, which ETJ is applicable to that zone, it's no different than having, uh.
Anyways, we have enough to probably talk about what we.
Well, and, and so why don't you guys figure out what Wuma says today and then bring that back to us, 'cause this is definitely not a council comment thing, but.
Yeah.
But I was done.
Okay, um, I'm finished. Okay, closed session. So I need a motion to move into closed session for student to NCGS 143 dot 318 dot 11A4 for economic development.
And, well, A1 for review and approval of closed session minutes, and then four for economic development, that's two different ones together.
I said A4, didn't I?
You just didn't do the minutes part.
Oh, that's not the minutes.
That's, that wasn't what we added, there was a.
And the minutes. Alright, I need a motion for that.
So who?
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we're in closed session.
Quarter's on.
So I need a motion to adjourn the work session on February 24th at 12:29 PM.
So who?
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.